Good morning and welcome to today's zoning hearing this March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Today providing our invocation is Pastor Julie Boone with First United Methodist Church of Marietta. After she provides the invocation, I will lead us in the pledge. For those of you willing and able, please stand for both our invocation and pledge.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Let us pray. For this day, we thank you, O God, and we praise you for the holy gift of spring that is birthing new life from the dead of winter. We thank you for the holy undertaking of work, a holy gift from you. And Lord, I thank you for this group of people gathered to do the work of public service for this wonderful county of Cobb and the citizens they represent. May this time in their meeting and the cases being presented today be handled with integrity and grace and humility, always acknowledging servant leadership as a call and a privilege. Bless this meeting of the Cobb County Commissioners and the people present, bless their waking and their sleeping, their work and their leisure, their families and themselves, so that they can in turn be a blessing to those whom they know and serve. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Pastor Boone. Our meeting is now called to order, and I will turn things over to John Peterson, our zoning manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When a case is called, we would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After that, we're going to call to see if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please then raise their hand so they can be counted for the official record. After recognizing both parties, they would be asked come forward, be sworn in. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets ten minutes, so you don't want to cover the same information over and over. And it's important to note that there is no rebuttal process, so you need to convey all your information to the board within your ten-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on the case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to discuss, because each side only gets ten minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information again and again. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From then, the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions, and then the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, continue, or hold the case at hand. There are five cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn without prejudice. These cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z thirty-six of two thousand and twenty-three, Mychester Inc. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Next case is resounding case Z sixty-four of two thousand and twenty-three, Cedar Real Estate Group Four LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. LUP eight of two thousand and twenty-four, American Protection and Tactical. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Other business item number sixty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three, Noble Storage LLC, Estate of Doty and Donald K. Nix. This case was withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. And lastly, other business item number seven of two thousand and twenty-four, G. George and Associates Incorporated. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. There are eleven cases on today's printed agenda which have continued or held, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z fifteen of two thousand and twenty-three, SDP Acquisitions LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Z fifteen of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Resounding case Z forty of two thousand and twenty-three, Atlanta Remediation Group LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the April second, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z forty of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Resounding case Z fifty-two of two thousand and twenty-three, Ten Fifty-four Investment Group LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the April second, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z fifty-two of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Resounding case Z fifty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three, SS Developers LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the April second, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z fifty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Resounding case Z sixty of two thousand and twenty-three, MRE Canton LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the April second, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z sixty of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Resounding case Z two of two thousand and twenty-four, Flory Development Group LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z two of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resounding case Z eight of two thousand and twenty-four, Jelani Campbell. This case was continued by the staff until the April second, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z eight of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resounding case Z nine of two thousand and twenty-four, Thomas O'Rourke. This case was continued by the staff until the April second, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z nine of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resounding case, pardon me, Land Use Permit Number Seven of two thousand and twenty-four, Amy Malahan. This case was continued by the staff until the April second, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so LUP seven of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. SLEP one of two thousand and twenty-four, Tire Swing Collective, Inc. This case was continued until the April second, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so SLEP one of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. And just as a side note to SLEP one, this case will be shown next month on the April agenda as withdrawn without prejudice. And lastly, other business item number two of two thousand and twenty-four, Three Sixty Property Solutions LLC. This case was continued by the Board of Commissioners until the May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so other business item number two of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. I would like to ask the folks in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off on your cell phones. When the phones ring, it does interfere with the broadcast and the presentations. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And at this point, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to, oh, I do have some early headcounts here to do before we get going. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to resounding case Z sixty-one of two thousand and twenty-three, David Pearson Communities Incorporated? Please stand and raise your hands for Z sixty-one. Nine? Okay, let's record, so there's nine people here opposed. Is there anyone here in support of resounding case Z sixty-one of two thousand and twenty-three, Okay, let me correct that to ten opposed, and there's no one here in support of resounding case Z sixty-one. Next case for an early headcount is resounding case Z three of two thousand and twenty-four, Ashwani Kumar Cora. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to resounding case Z three? Please stand and raise your hands. Eight? Okay, let the record show there's eight people here opposed to resounding case Z three of two thousand and twenty-four. Is there anyone here in support of resounding case Z three of two thousand and twenty-four? One? Okay, let's record, so there's one person here in support. And lastly, LUP number two of two thousand and twenty-four, Ronald McDowell. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to LUP number two of two thousand and twenty-four? Please stand and raise your hands. None? Okay, let's record, so there's no one here opposed. Is there anyone here in support of LUP two of two thousand and twenty-four? Please stand and raise your hands. One? Yeah, let's record, so there's one person here in support. And I would like to remind the folks who are here early for the early headcounts, you need to leave at least one person here to present to the board when your case is called. Okay, with that, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. First case on consent is resounding case Z four, Big Gym Therapy LLC. Requested rezoning from NS to NRC for a gym and fitness facility and administrative offices in Land Lot Two Seventy-Eight of the sixteenth district. The property is located on the west side of Kent Road, north of Kensington Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z four to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division dated January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Number two, variances as stated in the zoning division comments and recommendations. Number three, adherence to the Kent Road design guidelines. Number four, fire department comments and recommendations. Number five, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number six, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And number seven, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. If the applicant is present, is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z four? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Next case on consent is resounding case Z seven, Gary D. Walters, request of rezoning from CF to R twenty for a single-family residence in Land Lot One Ninety-Nine of the eighteenth district. The property is located on the west side of Pine Creek Court, north of Pine Creek Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z seven to the R twenty zoning district. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z seven? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the printed consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
Okay, that's a short one.
Maybe we can add a couple more, too.
I hope so. All right. Commissioners, is there anything else you'd like to add to consent today? Going, okay, we have one taker.
I would like to add OB nine of two thousand and twenty-four to consent agenda.
Okay, let me go ahead and call that case. Other business item number nine of two thousand and twenty-four is to consider a reduction of public roof finish from seventy-five feet per lot to zero feet per lot for lots three, three B, four, and four B for Timothy Everett. The property is located on the north side of Dewest Road, east of Lost Creek Drive, in Land Lot Two Ninety-Eight of the twentieth district. Is the applicant present?
Here.
Let the record show the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number nine?
In opposition.
Two opposed? Okay.
I believe they're opposed to OB eight.
Okay, so no one here opposed to OB number nine?
I would like to make a motion that we add OB nine of two thousand and twenty-four to the consent agenda with the additional stipulations. One, the stipulation letter dated March thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-four from DG M Land Planning, and also the OB plat dated two thousand and twenty-four dash three dash thirteen Everett, and that there would also be no further lot splits in all staff comments and recommendations. Second.
Thank you. Just wanted to ask before we move further if the applicant is amenable to that condition that was just read in by the district commissioner.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five-zero. Okay, anything else? I'm pausing, I can't believe it, we have three matters on consent. Nothing else?
Don't we have to vote on the three sides?
We do. Right, that was to add hers. I'm just checking in to see if any of you have any additional matters to add to consent. That's okay.
The only matter I do have to add is if you could please record my statement as is on file.
All right, seeing no additional cases to add, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Call the question. The motion carries five-zero. Okay, thank you. For those of you who are here as part of consent, you are free to leave at this time unless you'd like to watch the rest of the zoning hearing. We do have a number of cases that may be to your delight. Else not, we'll wait a couple minutes for people associated with the consent agenda All right, John.
Okay, starting off on the continued cases, first case we're going to hear today is resounding case Z sixty-one of two thousand and twenty-three, David Pearson Communities Incorporated. The properties look, pardon me, who is requesting rezoning from RM twelve, R twenty, CRC and NS to RM twelve for a townhome community in Land Lots Four Twenty-One, Four Twenty-Two, Four Forty-Three, and Four Forty-Four of the seventeenth district. The property is located on the west side of Atlanta Road, north of Daniel Drive. The applicant is present, and earlier there were ten people here opposed to resounding case Z sixty-one. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward, be sworn in.
Just a little bit. It's okay. I have never, ever.
You may begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Kevin Moore, here on behalf of the owners and applicant in this rezoning application that concerns a total of just over eight-point-two acres, located at the intersection of Atlanta Road and Daniel Drive, very close to the city of Smyrna. The property is highlighted on your screen now, and you can see how it is zoned and configured, and kind of give you an idea of what's adjacent to this property and influences, hopefully, its rezoning consideration. The property is currently zoned, starting on the right-hand side, that's where Atlanta Road is. You have just over an acre that is zoned RM twelve today. Then you have the balance of that property is zoned R twenty, with also a portion, smaller portion of the property also zoned RM twelve towards the rear. There are also two parcels that are involved that are front on Atlanta Road, zoned CRC, RM twelve, and NS, just to add more categories to the list of how this property is currently zoned. In terms of what's adjacent to the property, it's dominated by the parcel to the adjoining north that's zoned RM twelve. That is the Belmont Crossing Apartments that was built in the early sixties. For reference, though, it is just over nineteen units per acre, as far as that older apartment community there. On the north side of that property is property zoned fee simple townhomes for a townhome development that is under eight units per acre. To the south side of this property is property that is zoned R twenty along Daniel Drive for single-family homes. Interestingly enough, this property is also, in your future land use plan, identified as industrial compatible and a community activity center. So what we are proposing is rezoning to RM twelve for a townhome community, a maximum of ninety-six townhomes for this property. And I think it's important, on a couple of notes, as I go through this, the RM twelve that you see that's a part of this property, that just over one-acre parcel that fronts on Atlanta Road, and actually the intersection of Atlanta Road and Daniel Drive, is zoned RM twelve for twelve townhome units, and twelve units per acre. That was zoned as a result of the settlement of litigation. So that property, which is a part of this property, which will be part of this property and combined with this property, is already zoned RM twelve for up to twelve units per acre from a settlement of litigation. What we are trying to propose for your consideration is that this property be zoned RM twelve consistent with that settlement for ninety-six townhomes. I'm going to turn to the site plan, though, and go over some highlights with you, in particular highlighting what were initially staff comments directed to the site plan itself, which resulted in us updating that site plan, actually in January of this year, to incorporate the staff comments that were made at that time. Now, we have the site plan again, you have Atlanta Road, and this is Daniel Drive that makes a sharp turn coming from Atlanta Road. Again, this is the one acre that's already zoned RM twelve for twelve townhome units. Our access location is at Atlanta Road, as opposed to utilizing Daniel Drive. That was an important component, part of the settlement of litigation to rezone this front portion, RM twelve, was to ensure that access was Atlanta Road and not Daniel Drive. We have our layout of fee simple townhomes that will be for-sale townhomes for this community. Importantly, I want to highlight here, along our southern boundary, the initial site plan did not contain a buffer. What had been recommended by staff as part of adherence to your zoning code is that it should have a minimum twenty-five-foot buffer. So we have now, as part of the revision, and one of the main purposes of the revision was to include a twenty-five-foot landscape and screening buffer, which is consistent with staff's recommendation for this property. There's a total of a thirty-five-foot setback, which is different than a buffer. The buffer is within that setback. And so we have a twenty-five-foot buffer and a thirty-five-foot setback for the townhomes adjacent in this area here. You can also see from this site plan the existing apartments and their impact on this property. Certainly, what we propose, though, is a transition from the apartments to the single-family residences along Daniel Drive, by first ensuring that we have an appropriate buffer along the southern property, and second, by ensuring there's a transition in uses from apartments at just over nineteen units per acre to fee simple townhomes in the for-sale community at just over eleven units per acre for a total of ninety-six units. In addition, I want to reorient you as well to these two parcels here that are at the front of that apartment community, which are also a part of the ownership of this property, which are located here, in which we'd have two simply small parcels that will be developed also for for-sale townhomes there and there in those locations. Taking into consideration, those are both zoned now, really a commercial category, CRC and NS, as well as a small portion of it zoned RM twelve as it stands today. We do not believe those are appropriate commercial, small commercial parcels. They are certainly not large enough to provide for what we think would be quality commercial in these locations, and rather are much more appropriately used as for-sale townhomes, again, providing better transition to the older apartments, which are Belmont Crossing to the rear. In addition, I want to note a couple of other items. In this instance, when you review staff's comments and recommendations, those staff comments and recommendations highlight a couple of key components or facts for you. Number one, as I stated at the beginning, this property on your future land use plan is denoted and identified as industrial compatible and community activity center. It's staff's opinion that those two future land use categories are actually not appropriate for this property, given the changing conditions and developments that have occurred in terms of residential in this particular area. Moreover, as you can definitely see, an industrial compatible type development adjacent to the single-family R twenty lots would likewise be highly inconsistent and incompatible with their livelihoods and their homes. What we have provided and proposed, though, is a residential fee simple for-sale townhome community, which we think is far more compatible, and which your professional staff likewise agree, though they agreed at a lower density. We do not believe the lower density would be appropriate, given the high density that is located here, number one. Number two, given that this property has a portion of it, just over an acre of it, already zoned RM twelve for twelve units per acre for townhomes. If it's appropriate for one acre of our eight, it's appropriate for all eight acres from our standpoint. However, the rest and remainder of staff's comments and recommendations have been taken into account, have been incorporated into the site plan, so that we meet those comments and recommendations outside of that one component part. We also have included a stipulation letter that's dated February twenty-second, two thousand and four, which sets forth other highlights for this proposal and for your consideration, which include, among other items, mandatory homeowners association, mandatory upgrades in terms of architectural style and structure, as well as other types of conditions and stipulations that you would typically and normally see, and also which are included within staff's comments and recommendations as well. In all, we do believe that, given where this property is located, what's affecting this property, the fact that any proposal that would make at all any sense or compatibility, given the surrounding area, and particularly the existing homeowners that are along Daniel Drive, would not be, needs to necessarily not be consistent with the land use plan, which shows this is industrial compatible. So a change, we believe, should and appropriately be made here. We think the rezoning proposal takes into account the technical and substantive comments made by staff, and has incorporated those into a final plan for your consideration. With that, I'm here, and I can answer any questions that you may have, and respectfully request your approval of this rezoning application. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from those in opposition, and I believe there were multiple of you who stood up to speak, so just be mindful of your time, as all of you will have to
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Hardy. I live on Daniel Drive with my sister, Ally. We bought our first home here about four years ago. We're also Smyrna natives, and we manage businesses in the heart of downtown Smyrna. We are excited for the growth in our area, for both my business and for my home. This area to us is a sweet spot. It's right in between downtown Smyrna and downtown Marietta. It's a sought-after area for young couples looking to escape high-density housing from the city to start their families. My neighbors and I are extremely concerned for the intense density of this proposal. As you saw from Mr. Moore's presentation, there are four parcels, and there are two separate owners. In their information packet, they mentioned two different previous cases, one being the litigation that's applied only to that front acre. The reason it's applied to that acre is because the previous owner of that parcel tried to build a convenience store there, and then it was denied and something happened, and so they came back, and this was the settlement. So we were allowed all these variances and such, but before that, it was also R twenty. So it seems as though now this setback, the ten-foot setback, is trying to be applied to the entire strip, which I don't think is correct. The strip behind us is what we call the buffer zone. It was left to be an undisturbed strip of land to protect our single-family homes when the apartments were built. The acreage of the, or the density of the apartments was calculated using this buffer zone as they were one single property. Further proof that this was the buffer zone is that certain parts of the apartments, such as the service drive, sewage lines, parking lots, are actually located on the parcel that runs behind us, where they want to build the townhomes now. And for this reason, the apartments don't have their appropriate setbacks. And for this reason, the apartments don't have their appropriate setbacks either, and this puts these two projects right on top of each other. This is a concern for us for many reasons. The apartments are old buildings, and in December, they caught on fire. So just a picture to show the proximity. That's my neighbor Rochelle's house, and the tarp shows the apartments there. The other case that he mentioned was the townhome development to the north side of the apartment homes. If you take a closer look at that project, it's 53 homes on about eight acres. It's a clean project. It's a single strip of land. It's gated. It has amenities. It has green space. It has a pavilion. It has a dog park. If you compare that to what's being presented here today, it's around eight acres with almost double the units, no amenities. It's, as Kevin Moore said in another case, maxed out. So that is a concern for us as well. We have a lot of stormwater concerns. My sister and I volunteered for the Cobb County Adopt a Stream Program for many years. We noticed severe erosion starting along the creek bed that intersects the buffer zone property, and that happened as a result of the townhomes being built to the north. Stormwater spoke last time, and they mentioned that heightened stormwater efforts by the developer would not be able to fix the problems of the evils done in the past, referring to the development up north, but this looks like, you know, it's a result of a recent development.
Excuse me, ma'am. Hold on. We can't hear you. The fan is blowing very loud. We'll just take a pause for a moment, see if this... Okay, it's going down, John. Sorry about that. That's a first. See, we need one more first. Three cases on consent, noisy fan. What's next?
I'm scared.
Okay. You may go ahead.
Thank you. So we learned from meeting with a previous Cobb County engineer that if any kind of problems occur as far as stormwater goes, the burden of proof lies on our neighbors, and that seems to be something that would be a significant challenge for us. Flooding is a problem, as you know. Thank you, sir. Our street lacks stormwater infrastructure, so there's no gutters, no curbs. Most of our neighbors, neighborhoods in this area are the same. So we have flooding problems at the top, middle, and bottom of our neighborhood. This picture is taken at the top end of the street. It's unclear from the site plan how the top and the bottom parts of the townhome project would drain into the retention pond they have in the middle. And also, there is still no plan for stormwater at all on the two tiny parcels that flank the entrance to that high-density apartment complex. My home sits downhill to the slope from the buffer zone, which would make the new three-story, now three-story townhomes tower over my yard, make a wall of townhomes, and remove any sort of privacy. Right now, the current zoning allows for 32 homes. I believe this would allow for a responsible building that aids in the protection of the watershed and could allow for amenities such as green space, et cetera, for future residents. I did have a comment from a past, well, this is from planning and zoning before, so it says, "The site is heavily wooded, and this developed area provides significant water quality benefits to the watershed." So just wanted to show that the wooded area is important, as it sits in between two highly developed areas of downtown Smyrna and downtown Marietta. The last time someone tried to propose high-density housing here, these were some of the staff comments. Keep in mind that this project was 10% less even than what's being proposed right now. The proposed development will not impact the two adjacent apartment complexes, but will significantly impact single-family homes to the south. The tract adjacent to the single-family homes is a long, narrow strip of land and is not wide, about 200 feet, to provide sufficient buffering after developing the building pads and parking lots. Low-density residential with densities ranging from 1.5, 1 to 2.5 acres, sorry. The 6.339 tract, which is the buffer zone, is projected low-density residential and is very long and narrow, which would be difficult to build homes and provide substantial buffering next to the single-family homes. The Cobb County Comprehensive Plan recognizes the single-family homes in the area and encourages the protection of single-family homes along Daniel Drive. The proposed 6.339 tract is not consistent with the Cobb County land use plan, which recommends low-density residential adjacent to the single-family subdivision. The 6.339 tract is long and narrow, narrow strip of land being 200 feet in width, and it would be very difficult to build with parking and provide substantial buffering to the single-family homes. The staff would recommend the smaller tract remain a buffer to the single-family homes. So I hope that you can take all those things into consideration for your decision.
Thank you. Next speaker, you have a balance of about three minutes.
Three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sir, there is a timer on the podium there. You can keep track of your time.
Oh, I see. Well, there's a lot to cover with this case, a lot of points. It's a thorny case.
May you state your name for the record for us?
Ken Daniel.
Thank you, Ken.
Live on Daniel Drive. There are two owners, four tracts, multiple zoning categories. The largest tract is narrow, squeezed between overdensity 1960s apartments and 1950s single-family homes. This proposal is further burdened with issues related to building setbacks, recorded easements for above-ground sanitary sewer lines, a civil litigation case, a protected stream, which is subject to severe flooding, and serious erosion that's been impacting my property for years. There is a steep terrain that the planning staff said would require substantial leveling and walls, and there have also been five prior failed rezoning attempts for this property. I hope this is going to be the sixth one. With regard to the building setbacks, they have only 35 feet proposed on the south line next to the single-family homes, despite the fact that it's a transition from R12 to R20. On the north side with the apartments, they are proposing a 10-foot setback, even though the apartments themselves have a reduced building setback. One of these apartment buildings is only 15.4 feet from the property line. So if you then take the townhomes and put them with a 10-foot setback from the property line, the building distance from building to building is going to be less than 25 feet, building to building. And one of those apartments caught fire in December. This particular building is strangely missing from the plat that was provided to you. The building is not there. I can assure you that building is there. At the planning hearing, we were told that the 10-foot setback was because of a requirement of a civil litigation case related to the one-acre tract, but it's not. That was a different owner, a different tract. For the sewer line easements, those are above ground. There have been multiple sewage spills in the past.
Sir, your time's up.
Okay. Like I said, many issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we'll now hear from the district commissioner.
Thank you.
I would first like to call Andrew Heath up for questions.
Andrew Heath, Cobb County Stormwater Management.
Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning.
Can you address the runoff to the south mainly, to the Daniel Drive area?
Yes. As the opposition spoke, the subdivision to the south along Daniel Drive is an older development, frequently older developments don't have a lot of well-developed stormwater infrastructure. I don't know if erosion control has determined if the stream is a buffered stream or not. If it is, the way their current onsite detention is configured, it looks like the stream is flowing into it. So if the stream is considered to be a buffered stream, then we don't allow what's so-called in-stream detention, that is, where the stream just flows straight into the pond. The detention pond would have to be off to the side, out of the buffer. So that could be done. There, a lot of the problems, no doubt that the residents there along Daniel Drive, to be honest, even if this site were developed, you know, and provided detention in accordance with our requirements, they're going to continue to see probably a lot of the same problems because the developer of this site isn't required to, you know, correct all of the issues that have developed upstream. This area is, there's a lot of older development there that doesn't have any detention, a lot of runoff from the adjacent roadways and things like that, and that runoff is still going to continue to pass through the Daniel Drive property. Certainly, our comments are saying that, you know, naturally, you have to follow the county's ordinance, provide detention, runoff reduction, everything like we would normally require for any developed site. The, the, the stream or the flow there where it leaves their site and passes through the Daniel Road property, according to our GIS, there is a system of pipes that pass through that area now. If, because that development along Daniel Drive is older, even if that stream is considered to be a buffered stream, very likely, all of that piping was installed before the buffer ordinance was in place, and that's very typical across the county. So one thing that might be something that the developer could look at is how they could maybe improve that drainage system through that downstream development. Could they, you know, improve that piping? Could they add some additional inlets or something like that to try to help that runoff from where it enters the subdivision, get on down through the subdivision, and not cause so much of the problems, kind of like you saw in some of the slides that the members of opposition had shown? There are some other challenges with the development. Two parcels kind of off to the northeast that are separated, it isn't clear how they're going to be, how stormwater detention is going to be provided for those parcels, because they are sort of out along Atlanta Road, and they're not likely to be part of this, this system here. So there are definitely some challenges there on the site, but that's kind of a broad overview. If you had anything specific, I'd be glad to discuss that.
Yeah, but I understand what you're saying, and that we have a lot of older infrastructure all over the county. And as far as what their responsibility would be, I mean, I know they're showing detention, but there are issues now and have been for years, and 96 units is just going to add to that without solving the problem for the adjoining R20 on the south side and the west side. Do y'all have any questions for Andrew?
Just a point of clarification. The residents on Daniel Drive, did you state they live upstream?
Oh, no, downstream.
Downstream from where this development is? And for any stormwater that would be on this site, they would be required to address it so that it's not causing any additional flow to the residents on Daniel Drive?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
I know, although I guess...
You made a comment about those, excuse me, I'm sorry, were you saying something?
Yeah, no, pardon me for interrupting. I guess the point I was trying to make about the folks on Daniel Drive is they, although this site will be required to provide detention, this site is only a small fraction of that overall drainage basin. So even if this site does a good job, the folks on Daniel Drive are still going to see basically the same flow that they're seeing now, more or less, and so it's not really going to be something that they would really notice.
Thank you.
An improvement.
Thank you.
Lahia, can you come up? Thank you, Andrew.
Good morning, Leah Florham, DOT.
Good morning. Thank you. Can you address the access points for this property? Is it just what's already there on Atlanta Road to access?
So they're proposing two access, the one just north of Daniel Drive and the one at Thornton Drive, Thornton Circle. They're proposing two access, one for the smaller parcel, parcels and the main parcel. And they have addressed our comments on the one that is just north of Daniel Drive to propose a right-turn lane into it, and there's already a left-turn lane in the middle, so that they're already accomplishing that. And the one on Thornton Circle, we are proposing that they improve that radius at the very least, or propose taper on that drive as well. So because Atlanta Road, it's, you know, it's a major thoroughfare, so.
Okay, I'm only seeing, well, I can't see the edge of this. So where Daniel Drive is, they can turn in there, but they can only go to their subdivision. There's no way to go left up into, unless that space between five and six is access from Daniel Drive?
I'm not sure that I understand the question.
Okay. From, from Atlanta Road?
Yes, ma'am.
There's an entrance between Lot 1 and Lot 88?
Correct.
And then when you get to the intersection of Daniel, that's already there? That's already a street?
Correct, but they don't have access from there.
They don't have access into there, that you have to go into the subdivision from that entrance? It doesn't connect up to this property?
Correct.
Okay. So the only access is between Lots 1 and 88 off Atlanta Road, and it's full access? They can turn left or?
Yes, ma'am.
Left in or left out as well as right?
Correct.
Okay. I know that was an issue in the past, zonings of not being able to get to Daniel Drive. Okay, does anybody else have any other questions?
Leah, it's very hard to tell, but are there sidewalks shown on this site plan?
There are existing sidewalks, I believe, and they will have to replace anything that is broken and...
But what about sidewalks down the proposed development? Because it doesn't look like it's being...
No, it does not. It does not allow for it. And so these roads will have to be private.
But I understand one of the stipulations was, it was number six, was about the public-private roads, and it says it shall have private roads, but then it says, however, the applicant should have the option of constructing, or constructing public streets. And my concern with that is, is if we allow them to say, "We're going to first do private streets," they don't have to adhere to setbacks. But then if they turn around and say, "Oh, the board approved it, but now we're going to construct it to public standards," they don't have to go back and follow setbacks because it was, the setbacks were approved onto the private. So I have a real issue with that language going both ways for the applicant at this time.
I think that would be up to the applicant, what they want to commit to, because you're correct. We will, we will have to adhere to all the standards in order for us to acquire the road as public or accept the road as public.
Right, and with that, I think the applicant should be required to submit a site plan for this board to approve that shows either public or private, and then he has to do as the site plan was approved, not give them the option after the fact, when it's out of the public purview, to then change.
I agree with that.
Sure.
Okay.
I have another question for Lahia.
Go ahead.
Lahia, getting back to Commissioner Brawls' questions, I thought I heard you say that there are two points of entry into the neighborhood?
Well, not to the main, if you see, they're blocking down the neighborhood, there's one main strip, so that's the entrance north of Daniel Drive, and then they have another subsection of eight houses north of that off of Thornton Circle.
Okay, that's what you're referring to as the second entrance? Okay.
But they're not connected to each other.
Thank you. Okay, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion with some-
Before you do that, may I ask a question of clarification? And I don't know if this is a question for Fire or John, but there are several clusters where there are eight units, and I just wanted to know if that was in violation of any type of fire code, because generally, I'll see five units connected. Can you provide some clarification, John?
Yeah, you know, as far as I know, there's no violation of fire code for those eight standalone units. It is kind of odd that they're kind of up there, but that's just the way the property is, is situated and divided out. But, you know, I think we need to call Jeff up here to see if there is any fire concerns.
There are several clusters of eight, and I don't recall seeing that in other applications.
Jeff Burke, Cobb County Fire. No, there's no fire code violation with the eight clusters. The concern would be whether our hose length would, would reach around the whole cluster.
I see.
If our hose reach, hose reach can reach around the whole cluster, there's no concern.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Burrell, before you make your motion, I have a question for you. Did the applicant propose reducing the density on this site?
No, staff had recommended deleting it to FST, which would be eight units per acre, which is kind of dense and intense, which, how many units would that be, 60 something?
About 66.
Yeah. That's still intense.
But this is much more-
First since 96, was it?
Well, yeah.
All right.
There, there are, well, I'll get into that when my motion-
Did you have a question?
Okay. Well, first of all, there was an early head count of 10 opposed this morning that are here.
Yes.
And we have received several emails in, in opposition. But also, I believe Ms. Hardy had a petition that she submitted to us. Did the clerk receive that? Ms. Hardy, can you come back up? Did you, I know you sent us, may a petition, did you have that with you today to enter for the record?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you want to do that now, or? I, I didn't hear it in your, when, when you spoke, so I didn't know if you had it with you. And I believe there were, um, 34 signatures on there, or, you know, the total amount of, okay. Okay. Um, I just need to know the total number, but is it, just enter it for the record. I just want to make sure it was entered for the record, um, for the case, because I knew you had mentioned it or sent it to me, but, okay. This has been in several times, and it's, it's definitely a unusual parcel with the, the land use categories and also the different zoning pieces to it. My concern is the majority of the parcel before us, the eight acres is, well, I guess seven acres, because that one spot is seven, is one acre, are 96 homes. It's too intense with R-20 and LDR to the south and the west side. The frontage on Atlanta Road is, you know, it is what it is, more commercial, conducive to commercial, but the existing apartments north of this parcel were built in the 60s. And, um, you know, there were no zoning codes and steps and things like that, and even though they're RM12, um, you know, they, they're to the north of this. What my concern is, what is to the south, Green Acres Heights and the homes along Daniel Drive. To me, even FST at eight units per acre is too intense for that R-20 strip. And, um, you see the, the impact that it would put on an R-20 subdivision and LDR. So, my motion will be, also, there are variances with the RM12, and there would still be some, some of those same variances with setbacks and so forth, e- even if it was deleted to RMA. So, um, my motion is to deny Z-61.
Second. Okay, are there any comments or questions?
Just a brief comment. I appreciate the interest in development in this area. It's an older community, and a great job was done with the new townhomes off of Belmore, which Commissioner Burrell zoned. And I think this area is ripe for investment. I just think it needs to make sense for the community. I'm very sensitive to this part of the county because it used to be in District 4 when I was a commissioner, and then it got redistricted into District 3. And so, I'm always happy to see positive development here and hope that this builder will look to see how they can create a community that's more aligned with the challenges that, or overcoming the challenges that were presented today and in alignment with the adjacent community, particularly off of Daniel Street. With that, we'll call the question.
The motion carries 5-0. All right, we'll hear the next matter.
Okay, thank you. All right, next case is rezoning case Z-3 of 2024, Ashwani Kumar Cora, request rezoning from R-20 to FST for a townhome community in landlots 35 and 38 of the 16th District. The property is located on the east side of Alabama Road and on the north and south sides of Lindsey Way. Earlier, there were eight people who opposed and one in support. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Rajiv Kumar Kara, representing my father, Ashwani Kumar Kara.
Okay.
Very forthcoming, I'm not prepared today. I just received an email from-
Sir, if you can just lean a little bit closer to the microphone, yes, thank you.
I received an email yesterday morning from Dallas, stating to be here at 9 o'clock this morning, so I got on a flight from Arizona at 10:40 last night and flew in. So, I'm not 100% prepared for today's hearing, but I am here, present. My father is ill at this point. However, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions that the commissioners may have, and I appreciate the time today that's given to hear our matter. We are proposing to rezone the property from R-20, which is current, to FST, which is, to my understanding, in the future land use map. The property has been in our family for 44 years approximately, has been undeveloped, undisturbed. Two acres of the parcel was taken by the Arizona, excuse me, the Georgia Department of Transportation back in 1991. It's been our family's dream to see a development happen on this parcel, on this property. It was purchased with that intention back in 1980. We have received staff comments, the engineers, the civil engineers have hopefully addressed and mitigated some concerns. There are still some outstanding concerns that exist, which we are in the process of mitigating at this point. I think that's all I have for you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job for coming in 10:40 at night and stepping into something that you may not have been fully brought up to speed in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we'll now hear from those in opposition. And I believe there are multiple of you who stood up and were sworn in, so just be mindful of time. Again, you'll all have 10 minutes. And that's 10 minutes in total, yes.
All right, thank you. My name is Jacob Cersey, I live on Lindsey Way. So, I would be adjacent to the property that they're proposing to build. I would be that, that first lot next to it. I recently moved into the neighborhood, and my wife and I were seeking limited government. We were trying to find a, a neighborhood that didn't have the HOA. So, our neighborhood is rather a self-governed neighborhood. We, the people of Burnham Woods, we find it unconstitutional for them to build within our neighborhood, but without us. Like I say, we were seeking limited government, they're trying to bring the HOA and basically have rules that don't include us. We also find it unconstitutional that they are lacking, they're lacking popular sovereignty. There are about 65 homes in our neighborhood, and if we were to include the applicant as one of the owners, they would basically represent less than 2% of our neighborhood. So, I would like to ask the question to the board, in the eve of our presidential election, if one of the candidates were to only win Alabama and lose all other 49 states, could they still become the president?
This is not a dialogue.
Thank you.
You're here to listen, okay. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tom Gantshaw, and I live on Fitz Drive, and my property borders this. We are the last house at the bottom of Fitz Drive, and the stream does go through our property. We did have a zoning petition asking them to oppose the rezoning of the property. We have 105, do you want the copy of the rational? Okay. Thank you. Bear with me a second please. My wife Cindy and I have lived on Fitz Drive since 1996, and our property does border this acreage where the proposed development is. Looking at the site plan of the Cora Village, I noticed a red date stamp of December 6, 2023 in the top right corner with a date of 2/3/24 written above it. If this rezoning plan has been in the works that long, our neighborhood feels that we have been deceived, as there is never, never were signs posted on our area notating the request. If it wasn't for the East Cobb news, we would still be in the dark. The petition handed in are signings from our subdivision, Burnham Woods, not Berman Woods, as said on the, on the site plan, but it's Burnham Woods, and Indian Creek, which is directly across Alabama Road slash Highway 92. We share the same entrance off Highway 92 across the street from each other. Our sub was mostly built in the early 70s and Indian Creek in the mid 80s. Traffic-wise, the added 150 cars, that's 75 houses, two houses, two cars per house, would be an added disaster, as there is presently a very small window to safely enter the main highway as it is, when it is busy, which is most of the daylight hours anymore. Both of our subs were built, taking into account the terrain and old growth tree cover, both the running streams and the stormwater runoff complement the topography and choice of roads and residences. In our sub, the natural downhill flow of the water happens in a now natural swale between the two streets, Fitz Drive and Bedell Street. Between them, and then behind our house, it goes to the west side of our house, which is between our, our backyard and this. And the actual, that swale of the water that runs from Lindsey Way and that area down does flow through there, and I think I've sent you pictures of that, you may have got that in an email, how it can be very strong or just normal. We don't think the building of these, take into consideration that swale and that flow of water, because it's on the back part of my property, but it also comes through their property. And to put these three-story buildings very close to our back property lines, they have variances that actually make it very tight to our property lines. Again, no consideration for the existing homeowners or the character of Northeast Cobb, because there aren't no building type, this type in the whole Northeast Cobb area. We have nothing like this, it's all R-20. This stream that crosses our property, it has gotten quite a bit deeper since they did the, made Highway 92, Alabama Road, quite a bit larger. When they widened that and then fed some of that into the stream, the stream has deepened a lot over the last 25 years. But that's a different problem. There is a lot of, I did actually, in the last two weeks, have walked this whole property, the stream, and also our property and the properties across the street. What they're, what they're asking to do would not fit in to our area neighborhood at all. It's out of character. So, we're asking if you can, if they could find a way to maintain the R-20 zoning and put up some single-family homes that would fit in with our area, it seems to be the best option. And the fact that there are, this plan requires so many variances to try and force this development should be the ultimate red flag. So, I just, we, we, we ask that you deny this zoning change and find something that actually, if they want to build there, find something that would fit into the neighborhoods around us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Yes, sir. Yes, sir, there's 3 minutes and 30 seconds.
My name is Deward Welchel, and I live in Burnham Woods. I'm also a retired Cobb County employee, worked for parks for 20 years. So, I appreciate your stewardship of everything that goes on in our county. One thing that stood out to me when I read all of the things that the Planning Commission staff had gone through was how thorough it was, but how it addressed all of the things that I, that I'm concerned with, with, with where I live. Access, load density, all of these things that go into the Cobb County master plan for, you know, making this a, a nice place to live. I moved to the house that I have because of the load density, because it's an older neighborhood, because of what I see when I look out my back window. I see the mountains, I see the trees, I don't see three-foot townhouses, but I will if something like this happens. So, I appreciate the way things have been done in this part of the county. I appreciate the way things are done in all parts of the county. There is nothing adjacent to us that is similar to this. It's not like some of the other cases where, okay, well, this is here, and this can be better and, and all of that. I live there because it's not that way. I mean, there's not anything else around there that's like that, and, I mean, I'd rather nothing be built there. And, I mean, I'd rather nothing be built there. It'd be nice to donate it to the county as a green space. But anyway, I and my neighbors and those around, we're all in opposition to this and, you know, I hope that you will be too. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers? There's a balance of two minutes on the clock.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Cynthia Ganshaw and I have lived in the Burnham Woods subdivision for twenty-eight years. Our home has been in my extended family for the last four decades. When Mr. Cora proposed a similar rezoning request in two thousand and four with fifty-plus condos, the board denied the request as inappropriate for the area. Today, there are still no condos, no apartment buildings, no townhomes in the one-mile section of Cobb County along State Route ninety-two. There are seven subdivisions, all single-family detached homes, and some with a selling price of nine hundred thousand dollars. There are many more subdivisions up and down Mayberry and Sandy Plains Road. And a lot of people are looking for single-family detached homes and a lot of people are looking for ranch towns, homes. To put seventy-four units on this eleven-point-seven-five-acre property would have a negative impact on our property values. High density will affect the value of our homes and all the surrounding properties. The site, as stated before, is heavily wooded with hardwoods. Clearcutting would detract from the appearance of the land and the wood creates a good buffer from the traffic noise that flows up and down Alabama Road. More importantly, this would send a lot more water downhill into the creek towards Cheerful Lake in Fulton County. With all the impervious surfaces, the creek bed and surrounding areas may not be able to handle all this flow. Again, adding a hundred and fifty more cars to the AMPM traffic would pose a greater safety issue. Sometimes it takes up to ten minutes for us to be able to get out of our subdivision. There is no traffic light at Lindsey.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Okay, thank you. I ask that you deny this request.
All right, we'll now hear from our district commissioner.
Thank you. John, there was mention that there were no signs up. Do we have the mailings that were sent out for everyone within a thousand feet in the file?
Yes, we do have the mailings and the signs were up. This was originally a February case, so when the staff went and checked them in January, the signs were up.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
So they, yeah, this was continued twice from Planning Commission because the applicant wasn't present. But they did hear it, they did hear it this month.
That's correct.
And they have recommended denial.
That's right.
Okay. But we do have the mailings that they did comply with the thousand-foot radius mailings?
Yeah, they're in file.
Okay. There's just, you know, confusion about the signage and I wanted to make sure that that was, that you did receive the notice. And I guess we can't really verify the signage, but I'm ready to move forward with it. So let's see, there were eight people in opposition with the early head count this morning. And we did get a petition submitted of a hundred and five signatures for the record. Thank you. This is another one that isn't really appropriate for the surrounding neighborhoods. This is all R-20 on all sides adjoining this parcel. And I'm not sure why all the other R-20 is LDR and this is MDR, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, that's unusual. There was also comments about no townhomes in the immediate area in the northeast Cobb area. The only townhomes proposed and approved that I recall was probably eight or ten years ago at Childers and Shaliford. But that was a transitional piece because it's in front of a Kroger shopping center and that was more transitional and those, but those were approved and there were other improvements that were made at the signal by the developers. So that's not really similar at all to this R-20 to me. So, and this also has variances and I think it would be better served to remain R-20 and compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. So my motion will be to deny Z-three.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to second for discussion. I believe Commissioner Richardson had a comment.
It was more of a, thank you, it was more of a general comment around the future land use plan and where they're just, I think, knowing some infrastructural hurdles and certainly what's developed in this area, there may need to be a revisit on the future land use.
Yes, and I'll be glad to pass along the planning that they need to look at this property.
Thank you.
Well, and then to add on to Commissioner Richardson's comments, if you look at Water and Sewer's comments, there is not sewer available to this site. It's only uphill, which means a lift station, which Cobb County code does not allow. So from that aspect, you know, the only appropriate development on this parcel, given Cobb County's code and ordinances, would be an R-80 development. So that way the development could handle septic if the soils supported it. What I also found interesting, and this kind of goes back to Commissioner Richardson's comment, if we put back up the slide that showed the surrounding R-20, while it shows it's R-20, these are not developed R-20 lots. These lots seem much bigger than R-20. Can you confirm that, JP, or?
And I've not checked with lot sizes, our commissioner, but there are a few in there that look like they're greater than twenty thousand square feet.
Right, and so I guess, you know, again, to me, this indicates an area that, again, with staff comments, is not served by sewer. Therefore, they are on septic.
Right, and that's probably why they're larger, two-acre lots, because if they're on septic too, so, yeah. Thanks for all those comments. I appreciate it.
Okay, we have. Yes, we do. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, next case is rezoning case Z-six of two thousand and twenty-four, Inline Communities LLC. Request rezoning from R-20 and R-30 to R-20 for a single-family home subdivision in landlines twelve forty-eight, twelve forty-nine, twelve fifty, twelve sixty-eight, twelve sixty-nine, and thirteen twenty-two of the nineteenth district. The property is located on the east side of Brown Road, north of Stout Parkway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-six? Let the director show there's no one opposed.
Interesting. You may begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning again, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Moore. I'm here and pleased to represent Inline Communities in this application for rezoning for a large tract. It's almost a hundred and fifty acres. It's just over a hundred and forty-eight acres located on Brown Road, near Brown's Road's intersection, just north of it, of Stout Parkway. For a location standpoint, if you're familiar with where Stout Park is located, it is just east of Stout Park. And you can see on our screen now, we've shown you where Stout Park is located and highlighted in red is this subject property, which is, like I said, almost a hundred and fifty acres located off Brown Road and also off of Holloman Road. This property is currently zoned R-30 and R-20. There is a significant portion zoned R-20, though the, most of the property is zoned R-30. But in particular, I want to make sure that you're aware of what's surrounding this property. This is not property that is sitting in the middle of R-30 property. It's quite the opposite. What you'll notice is where this is, just to the west, directly across Brown Road is Brown's Crossing subdivision, which is an R-20 subdivision. On the north side of this property is property zoned R-20. Along the Brown Road, the adjacent properties are zoned R-20, as is a significant portion of this property coming in off Brown Road. On the northeast corner, adjacent to this property, is property that was rezoned and is under development for R-15 OSC, Open Space Community, as well as R-20s across Holloman Road. There's also a conservation subdivision, CES. You'll see that is also, which was the precursor to an open space community, is a conservation subdivision that's there as well. And there also is surrounded on the south side by R-30 properties. What we wanted, are proposing though, for this property is to be rezoned from R-20 and R-30 to R-20 for a total of a hundred and eighty single-family homes for a traditional single-family neighborhood. Now, what does that mean from a future land use category standpoint? This property is V-LDR, which is Very Low Density Residential, on your land use plan and within an area that's dominated by that category, which recommends residential, single-family zonings or densities anywhere from zero up to two units per acre. Our proposal as R-20 at a maximum of a hundred and eighty homes is consistent with that future land use category. Our proposal of a hundred and eighty homes is at one-point-four-eight units per acre. So even at R-20, which typically averages out around one-point-seven-five units per acre, Inline Communities brings you this proposal for a total of a hundred and eighty at one-point-four-eight units per acre. So under one and a half on a density scale, which again shows, I believe, the intent of Inline as far as this planning and design process to be assured that it is designing a subdivision from at least from a density standpoint and other standpoints as well that mirrors the surrounding community by not trying to max out, so to speak, an R-20 zoning, but being very particular and specific. This hundred and eighty is a reduction. Initially, it was applied for as part of our original site plan as a hundred and eighty-eight homes. After our community meeting, we had a great community meeting nearby with members of the community that was organized through Brown's Crossing, as well as involved many adjoining neighbors. Through their comments, we've reduced it to a hundred and eighty, which is the proposal that you have in front of you, as well as the one that was recommended for approval by your Planning Commission. This overall subdivision, as I stated, is in the traditional style of a neighborhood subdivision. It will have a highly amenitized, both passive and active amenities. You see that there is quite a bit of floodplain, but it's all along the southern side of this property. It's just somewhere around twenty-five acres of floodplain that is along the south side of this property, but that is very useful for passive, open space and passive amenity, as well as including, as part of this site plan, clubhouse, cabanas, pocket parks and pools that will be a part of the subdivision that you would expect to see. There are no variances as a part of this zoning. All lots meet the required minimum lot size and setbacks as well. We've in fact, in areas where this property is adjacent to any existing R-30 properties, we've voluntarily agreed to increase our rear setback to meet R-30 setbacks, which are forty feet from the thirty-feet setbacks that are present for R-20. And we've done that as part of our stipulations. In addition, we have included a ten percent rental limitation as part of having a mandatory homeowners association, which we think is very valuable and very critical for this subdivision and for this community because as zoned, that stipulation would not be in place. As zoned, none of these stipulations would be in place. I also wanted to see, you to see just how really this subdivision will sit. This is a view or rendering from Brown Road. And if you go back to our site plan, you can see it's a, it doesn't have much road furniture on Brown Road and there's a stream that you have to cross. So actually what happens is the subdivision itself will sit well off of Brown Road. We'll have a bridge entrance coming in off of Brown. We've agreed to certain enhancements for our landscaping and entrance features. Those were part of a collaboration, again, with the community about how that would look as part of their community along Brown Road, using certain types of fencing that you can see here. In addition, I want to make sure that you see the quality that Inline Communities brings, who's developed residential communities here in Cobb and across metro Atlanta. And these are examples of the types of amenities that they provide in terms of pocket parks, pools and other community gathering places such as fire pits. But I really want to concentrate at the conclusion of this on what I think is the dominant issue in this particular area. All of us are familiar with the two thousand and nine flood that happened along Sweetwater Creek. Part of the intention that we brought in specifically Inline Communities and its engineers, planners and engineers, is let's identify the stormwater concern, the stormwater management concern that's present here and make sure that we can help the situation, that our development addresses that on the front end. And so here's what we have done as part of that engineering and stormwater sensitivity. First, I want to make sure that everybody is aware. The FEMA flood maps, the hundred-year floodplain, was reanalyzed since two thousand and nine flood. That was reestablished in two thousand and seventeen. Now that floodline is three feet higher in terms of its elevation, meaning more property is now designated as a hundred-year floodplain. What we wanted to make sure of, even though Cobb County code does not require us to keep all lots that are R-20 standard lots out of the floodplain, each and every one of our lots will contain and have no one-hundred-year floodplain within those lots. We've designed that specifically, which is a huge stormwater benefit overall. Importantly though, we've also agreed to oversize stormwater detention facilities and management, in essence, and we've spelled that out very specifically in our stipulation letter. What we're doing is elevating our stormwater controls to the next highest year or highest flood elevation or flood event. What that means for us that aren't engineers and that aren't Mr. Andrew Heath, who can explain it a lot better than I can, is that we have enhanced and elevated stormwater management controls well beyond what's minimally required for this subdivision. And I think that proactiveness on behalf of Inline Communities is simply tremendous as it relates to this proposed rezoning. We have completed all traffic studies, which have been accepted by Cobb County Department of Transportation. In addition, our stipulation letter goes into great detail about not only the stormwater controls that we are bringing as part of this overall development, but ensuring that we're exceeding all the stormwater management comments and recommendations. In addition, we believe strongly that by bringing forth this development and the manner in which Inline Communities has engaged with the community and brings this application for your consideration, we think it's an outstanding example. I'm here, I can answer any questions. Also representatives of Inline Communities, its owners, Brian Musoff are here as well and we respectfully request your approval of this rezoning application. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I don't think there was anyone here in opposition. Is that correct? Okay, not seeing anyone. We'll hear from Commissioner Sheffield. Sure, is there anyone? Thank you, Commissioner. It's atypical, but certainly, there is a balance of one minute on the clock if anyone would like to speak in support of this application.
Morning, Board. How you doing? Good. Name is Clint Thorne Rice. I'm the president of Brown's Crossing Homeless Association. Last time we met, wasn't a good meeting. This time, you guys see the difference. I'm recommending, well, I'm hoping that you guys go ahead and approve this. A lot of work went into it. Hopefully this development can help take care of some of that stormwater that we are already dealing with. Then that's the biggest issue is the storm warning, the storm water. These guys, they put a lot of work in. As you see, they're here. They came to the community. They did this, this, saying Kevin Moore. Night and day, big behind difference, and that's all we asked for. For the other property on the other side, we also request that it be consistent with anybody that wants to come in and wants to develop. anybody that wants to come in and wants to develop. They got to come in the same way, and if they do not come in the same way, we'll be here to fight them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think that will take the balance of our time. There's only 15 seconds left. So with that, Commissioner Sheffield, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Andrew here, I just have a few questions for clarification on stormwater.
Andrew Heath, Cobb Stormwater Management.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. In your comments for the downstream description, there are notes that there will be a flow on an unnamed creek, creek behind the residential lots. So my question is, are you familiar with those? Okay. So my question is, for those lots, are those within the development or an adjacent community?
Yes. Excuse me, within the adjacent communities. The comment, I think you're referencing is that, I think the applicant, excuse me, I'm all choked up. The applicant has done a really good-
We have that effect on people sometimes.
The Paul. The applicant has done a really good job with their onsite stormwater management, and I applaud their efforts for that. The site is challenging, because if you look at it topographically, there are some areas on the east side of the site and the west side of the site that don't actually drain back immediately to the detention ponds on the site, and they want to drain away to the east and the west. And that was a concern that we had. This came up during the planning commission discussion about that, and it's mine, I don't want to speak for the applicant, but it's my understanding that they understand that and that there may need to be some lots reconfigured or even lost necessarily in order to, you know, create the detention ponds where they're needed to control the runoff in those other basins that are not flowing immediately south within their site. And so that seems to be, there you go, those got turned on there. So I think the applicant is understanding that, and that would be something that we would work out in planned review at that time.
Okay.
So I think that's, if that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you. And there was one other question on your comments. I'm trying to find it, but there was a reference to the southern edge of the site. There may be some lots that are impacted. Are those the same lots that you just discussed?
Yes.
It's the same one? Okay. All right.
Yes, it's that same issue, probably along that far sort of southeastern edge of the site.
Okay, thank you. And just also for my edification, RRV, I noticed that in the comments, I'm not familiar. Can you describe what that is?
Yeah, probably. I try to avoid definitions or acronyms, because everybody loves acronyms, but RRV is what's referred to as runoff reduction volume.
Okay.
And previously, before 2016, the methodology that was adopted in the Georgia Stormwater Management Manual was what was referred to as water quality, where you captured a certain amount of volume, and then it could be released gradually over time until the pond was empty or down to a permanent pool elevation. Runoff reduction is sort of an improved way of doing that. You're capturing a certain amount of runoff volume, but you're containing that onsite and you're basically forcing it to infiltrate into the ground rather than releasing it slowly. So that's kind of the difference in those two methodologies.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for Andrew, unless you guys have something.
Okay, any other comments or questions for Andrew?
Okay, thank you. I had a few questions for DOT, but I think we were able to get that worked out, so that's fine. I don't have any other questions. Let's see.
Do you guys have any questions before I move to?
No questions, just comments. I mean, great job, this is what we were looking for. The last time was just some consideration for the stormwater challenges that were clearly presented by those in the community, and we appreciate this most recent iteration to address that. To hear a comment made that this is how other developers need to approach us says a lot about how the community was considered through this, and so really want to thank those who are here as part of In-Line Communities for taking that approach and your representative as well, with your attorney.
Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, and also, I'd like to commend and comment on, this is very low-density residential, which allows up to two units per acre, and with the 188 that was units that were originally proposed, they were at 1.55, so based on the 121 acres, not the total acres because of the floodplain. That's to be commendable, but also, no variances.
Okay. Head nods. Commissioner Richardson?
I just want to say ditto, because that's the kind of cooperation that just produces something beautiful.
It goes a long way.
It was beautiful, so kudos.
Of course, not all of us have 140 acres left in our districts to do something that's nice, but good job.
Very good. Thank you all for joining us today. I appreciate the applicant, again, meeting with the community and additional measures that were taken to address the residents' stormwater concerns. A special thanks to Mr. Rice for engaging in the zoning process, not just with this one. I wanted him to have an opportunity to share some stuff on the record, so thank you for that. But also with another development that was in the community, so I really appreciate you being a part of the zoning process and your advocacy for the Powder Springs community. So thank you, sir. I am pleased that the proposal will be a single-family detached development, which is consistent with the current housing inventory in the area. And as was mentioned earlier by my colleagues, the proposed development is also consistent with the very low-density residential, future land use category, which allows between zero and two units per acre, and it's a further reduction from the original submittal, which was 188, and that was reduced to 180 units. I am in support of the planning and zoning staff analysis that the proposed development will not adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby properties. And with that, I am prepared to make my motion, Chair.
Yes, please.
And I make a motion to approve Z-6 2024 with the following conditions. One, revise the following stipulations to J. Kevin Moore's letter of agreeable stipulations dated March 13, 2024. Item number three, the residences within the proposed community shall have a minimum of 2,000 square feet of heated and cooled space. This shall include any ranch-style or 1.5-story homes. There shall be no more than 20% of ranch-style or 1.5-story homes built within the proposed community. Item number four of the stipulation letter, the front elevations start to comprise of a minimum of 50%, minimum of the materials outlined in the stipulation. Item number eight of the stipulation letter, the lighting for the entrance signage and landscaping shall be hardwired electrical lighting. The district commissioner to approve the final landscape plan. Item number nine of the stipulation letter, the community shall have both passive and active amenity areas to consist of a clubhouse, pool and trails, other amenities such as cabanas, masonry, fire pits, gazebos, et cetera, in addition to the required clubhouse and pool are optional. District commissioner to approve the final amenities plan. And number 11 of the stipulation letter, include wording to reflect that the detention pond area to be fenced with black vinyl fencing, vinyl clad fencing. Construction hours are to be Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Any damage caused to the adjacent roadways of the proposed development shall be repaired within 90 days of the project completion. Landscape plan to be approved by the district commissioner, and the farm-style fencing on the subject property's frontage along Brown Road and Holloman Road is to be approved by the district commissioner. And finally, all other staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. And that concludes my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. And we'll take a five-minute break before we get to our next application.[1181.83]
Good morning and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners zoning hearing this March 19. John, I'll turn it over to you to cue us up for our next matter.
Thank you. Okay, next case we're going to hear is LUP 1 of 2024. Cristel Y. Herrera, Jr. requests a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles than the code allows in Land Lot 216 of the 20th District. The property is located on the south side of Hood Circle and on the east side of Kansas County West Road. Is the applicant present? The director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 1? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning to the Board of Commissioners. My name is Cristel Y. Herrera, Jr. I was here last on February the 6th with the Planning Commission. And I was asking for land reuse permission. I had five vehicles when I was here last. But like I notified Officer Jason Cochran, that one of the vehicles that I was repairing is no longer with me. I took it to the junkyard. So I now have four vehicles. And as the Planning Commission, I asked them and they stated that I could park four vehicles in the driveway. The driveway to my house could easily have six vehicles that could park there. But I'm asking for those four. I normally keep two of the vehicles, older ones, just to travel back and forth to work. And the, my job sometimes asks me to travel further out. And I use the other two vehicles or one of the others that has less mileage and more dependable to travel out. I work in Canton, Georgia. And I work for the United States Department of Agriculture. And this is what I'm asking the, the board if you all grant the permission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your presentation. We asked if there was anyone in opposition. There is a balance of eight minutes if anyone is here to speak in support of this application. All right, not seeing any, sir. I'm going to turn things over to the District Commissioner and she'll call you up if she has any additional questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And actually, sir, if you could just wait right there because I do have, have some questions. I was a little confused because on your application, you stated that there were two adults in the home.
Yes.
But then in the code enforcement report, it stated there were three.
My granddaughter.
So how many individuals are living in the home currently?
My granddaughter and my wife and myself.
So there's a total of three. Okay.
Is she an adult?
No, she's 15 years old.
Okay, so two unrelated adults and you have a minor.
Right.
And then my next question, are you doing automobile repairs on your property?
No, at the time, one of the vehicles, the one that I took to the junkyard, I was repairing it or installing the transmission, but it didn't work. So I took it to the junkyard. That was a vehicle that I was, it was a '95 Nissan Maxima. And it's gone. Yes.
And then the code enforcement stated you also had expired tags on the vehicles that were in your property. Are all your vehicles' tags current?
Yes, all of them are current.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I have a question maybe for code enforcement. The applicant stated that he has four vehicles and looking at the zoning analysis, I thought it stated he can have three vehicles outside. Or can he have four vehicles outside?
Based off of the square footage of the property, he is allowed to have three. But he's filling out an application to request to have four, which is more than what's allowed.
Four, okay, not the five. I thought I heard.
He did have five, but one of the vehicles were non-compliant. And that vehicle since then has been removed from the property as of February 19th, 2024.
The one you are fixing the transmission or trying to fix the transmission on? Okay.
The only confusion is the adults in the house. When the officer went out to do an inspection, the owner advised the officer that he lives at the house with his wife and his adult son and himself. So today stating that it's a teenager. So I'm not sure if somebody moved out and a child moved in or what happened.
Okay.
No, my granddaughter and my wife and myself.
Okay.
I don't have anybody.
Okay, your son would still be a related adult.
No.
Okay. Did I hear? Okay. Did you want to respond?
Are there any cars in the garage?
I have a motorcycle in the garage and my wife has the rest of the garage all.
Man, you brought her into this.
Okay, so this is, the violation is based on the number of adults in the square footage?
It's not adults.
I mean, number of three.
He's in violation for the amount of vehicles as far as the number of adults he's in compliance, but the number of vehicles is putting him in violation.
But based on the square footage?
Yes, ma'am.
The 390?
Yes.
Okay. So he's asking for one more outside. There's no way to put a car in the garage with the motorcycle?
Not at this time.
Not enough room? Okay. Just curious.
And so your granddaughter is now living with you. Do you know how long she will be residing with you?
Till she graduates.
And I'm assuming.
She's 15 years old now.
So does she have a vehicle currently that is one of them that are being accounted for?
One of those vehicles will eventually be hers, but she's only 15.
Okay. I don't see any other comments.
Okay, I believe the, John, if you can verify, the Planning Commission's recommendation was to approve for the 24 months or was it 12 months?
24 months.
24 months. Thank you. Sir, you can be seated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lila. Thank you. Okay, with that, I will make a motion to approve lot 1 of 2024 for no more than four vehicles to be parked outside of the garage. Other conditions will be that there will be no further automobile repairs to be done outside. And the application will be good for 24 months from the date of this approval. Second.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? Commissioner Brough?
Did you say 12 or 24 months?
Any other comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
All right, next case is LUP 2 of 2024. Ronald McDowell requests a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles than the code allows in Land Lot 365 of the 16th District. The property is located on the north side of Lakeside Drive, northwest of Chastain Lakes Drive. The applicant is present and earlier there are no one here opposed and want to support. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning. My name is Ronald McDowell. Sorry we have to meet like this. But last time when I left here, there was a couple of things that were considered to be outstanding and I would like to hit that first to show that I am trying to be compliant. Right in front of the car there, there's a fan hole there. And I've worked with watershed, also have an email from DOT, which I also sent to the zoning code enforcement people that what was there was okay and fine. That seemed to be something that was in question the last time we was here. Also, the shed in the back, back there, that was one of the issues that was at hand that it need to be moved five feet over to the left. When I left here, there's a copy of a receipt in which I paid over $1,000 to actually get that moved. They was waiting on the actual conditions because we're getting a lot of rain. As soon as the rain move, they will move it. So those were two of the outstanding conditions before we got to the part and really why we were here was because of parking. I put in a request to get additional parking. Just before I get to that, this is just some background of the subdivision. Here, I'm not, the reason why I'm putting this here because it does help my case is that I'm not the only one that has the issue. They have two cars in there plus they have, if you look, that's five. This is an issue also. So parking seems to be an issue in our subdivision. This one here, because the car is parked right there, it actually have five cars up on the driveway, but they use the curb to actually park more cars. This one here, we have there, three of them are gone. But if you look to, to the far right, you got cars parked down the side for the same house. So I'm almost to the end. There, the other three cars are gone for now and those two cars belong to that house. Now, from my understanding of what the code says is that eight adults can be in my house and I can have eight cars. Of course, it was interpreted four cars in the garage and four cars in the driveway. All right. Towards here, this one, that's the picture of my home. And the truck is right there in the driveway. Of course, we can see in my driveway, I have more than enough to cover the actual six cars. But the code enforcement, from their understanding is that I should have at least two in the garage. And of course, by my own mistake that I don't have a garage. So I take responsibility for that. So, and the actual shed down at the bottom would be moved. And right now, if you look even with the space in between and the space at the end, you can kind of see that at least eight to 10 cars could go there. But I'm only asking for six because I have a daughter who would be out getting ready to go to college in two years. My son is trying to transfer to Georgia. So within two years, I'm looking at removing those two cars be gone. So if you guys can find it and y'all give heart to reconsider and approve this, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Again, there's a balance of time, five minutes for anyone who'd like to speak in support of this application. Okay, not seeing any. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition? All right, again, not seeing any. I'll turn things over to you, Commissioner Brough.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, Mr. McDowell, for help explaining some of this. But I'm going to ask you to come back up because I do have some questions. First of all, what's before us today is the number of cars. There are other issues that you addressed that at the Planning Commission, the opposition addressed. But they are HOA issues. And as you know, the county can enforce HOA covenants. That's a dispute or issue with you and the HOA Association for Chastain Lakes. So when you were here before, when you were before the Planning Commission, the, we held this, when you were before us, we held this to see if there was something we could work out for the six cars for the period of time until your two children graduate from college or move out. And when you met with John Peterson and I, I think we came to an agreeable solution that would benefit you and also address the issue of six cars out front. The other issues that were brought up or not before us today is this board, just the car situation. But if you would like to enter for the record, those, the permits that you have and the letter from Stormwater on the easement, the driveway concrete, you're welcome to do that. That it could be addressed when you, you know, do meet with your HOA Association for those issues. So that's up to you. What we talked about, because of the hardship, to me, it's a hardship with, with, you know, the garage being built out for your mother-in-law, that situation. And with the adult children at home that are going to be moving out in the next couple of years. We came up with a plan to move two of the cars behind the fence on, on concrete, on the concrete pad. And then one of the sheds is gone and one will be moved. You showed us that invoice. Will be moved to the back of the house on concrete blocks. Because they, they, all of this has to be on a hardened surface. And then that way, that will give you some time until the two cars in the back on concrete behind the fence, they won't be visible. And that will give you some time to come into compliance with just four in the driveway and none on the street. So are you agreeable to that scenario?
That's fine.
Okay. And would August 1st of 2026 give you time for them to graduate? And would, would that work?
That's fine.
So since this is a lot and you're asking for 24 months, but we can add to August 1st. That means in two years that you would have to come back if you wanted to keep the same situation. Or, or we can deny it, but give you, you know, the two years to come into compliance. So I'm not sure. If you know you're going to be, you're not going to have the situation in two years. But since this is a family and a hardship, I guess we could just approve it for the two years to August 1st with direction to move the two cars. Okay. All right, so my motion is to approve lot 2 for until August 1st of 2026. I'm not sure how many months that is, 24 plus? Can I do that? Or do I have to do 24 months and then renewal?
24 months is the maximum per the code.
Okay.
So he would have to come back for renewal.
Okay. But can I deny it and give him till August 1st of 2026 to come into compliance? I mean.
I mean, that would really be unusual. I mean, if they say denial and then allow them to continue to do it for that period of time, that'd be stretching the, what usually the board would do.
Yeah, I would say that would almost seem violating a principle of the policy. If the policy only allows 24 months, but you get denied and get more time, it seems. In spirit and violation of the principle of it.
Okay, well, I wasn't aware. I couldn't extend it. So, yeah, you may have to come back for another year renewal. What if I do one year renewal and then he comes back for two more years? I just do, I just, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to do 24 months.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve lot 2 for 24 months with stipulation to move two of the cars behind the fence on concrete, on the concrete slab where one shed is currently located, but will be moved behind the house on concrete blocks. And no more than four cars out front, outside in the driveway and none on the street for 24 months.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Can I ask one question? It don't have nothing to do with that. I was going to ask how to add the documentation.
Okay, why don't, well, let's take a, why don't we take a couple minute? Why don't we take a break until 11:10 and then you can ask your question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem. Take a three-minute break. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we are now resuming our zoning hearing, and John, you can queue us up for our next matter.
Thank you. Next case we're gonna hear is LEP 3 of 2024. Facilat Adesina requests a temporary land use permit to allow more adults than the code allows at Land Lot 645 of the 19th District. Property is located on the west side of Ridgecrest, Ridgecrest Circle, north of Ridgecrest, Crest Drive. The applicant is present? Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 3? Let the director show there's none. Would the applicant please come forward and be sworn in?
Good morning. First, I would like to apologize for not being here on February 20.
Thank you, ma'am. If you can help us in leaning towards the mic?
Okay.
And then just state your name for the record for us, and then you can get started.
Okay. First, I would like to apologize for not being here on February 20. It was just a misunderstanding of the process. I thought it was just approved. Once, because it was approved that day, I thought that was it, I didn't know. I still have to come back.
Okay, ma'am, can you just state your name again for the record?
Facilat Adesina.
Thank you. Okay, you may go ahead, thank you.
On October 25th, I signed an agreement with Daniel Ansonia, who is a disabled based on the disease called Maratonic Muscular Dystrophy. They moved in immediately. On October 27th, I received a call from a code enforcement officer that there is a violation of too many adults living in the property, more than the square footage allowed. Meanwhile, I just finished the basement, which had increased the number of adults allowed to five, but with a clause that only one unrelated adult can be allowed. When I learned about this code, I felt so bad, and I feel like I should help, help them because they were almost thrown out of their former place where they had lived for nine years because the owner wanted to sell the house, and they are just moving to my place few days before I got the call. This made me pursue the land use permit. I request this situation that the city allowed them to live there based on the fact that Ansonia cannot live alone, and she needs Daniel's help. The last time that I was here, and it was approved for 12 months, and it was shown that there were some, that is still, the property is still on violation for outside storage. And they were, and we were told that those things should be moved. Last three days, I took a picture just to show some evidence that most of all those things have been removed and just few things like kids' toys that are outside. And can I show the pictures or no? That is the back, one side of the back. And this side is being cleared. There were things that were not good, that were placed there, they've been removed. This is the outside look now, just a lawnmower that was there at the time of the picture. And then, yeah, and the other driveway, there's only one car that is parked there. And this is the side of the house, which is a lawnmower, trash can, because they really don't have storage in the back to put things like this. Those are just the kids' toys on the side of the house. So, we will appreciate it if this request is granted.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone here to speak in support of this land use permit? Is there anyone here in opposition? Okay, not seeing any, I'll turn things over to the District Commissioner.
Thank you. I do have a, a couple of questions for the applicant. But if you can just go back, you mentioned on 10/25, you signed an agreement. I kinda missed that part. Can you describe what that is?
Yeah, October 25th was when I signed an agreement, agreement with the couple, the husband and the wife.
And when you say, pardon me, go ahead.
To, that they were moving to my place.
Okay, so, when you say agreement, you mean like a lease agreement?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, you mentioned that you had the downstairs or the basement finished, and that's where the couple reside?
Yes.
Okay, do you know if they're married or unmarried?
Married.
They're married?
That I know of, yes.
Okay. Do you reside at the property?
No, I don't.
You do not, okay. So, are there any occupants that live upstairs?
Yes.
Okay, and how many occupants live upstairs?
Three adults and four children.
Three adults and four children?
Yes.
Are any of the three adults and four children unrelated?
Those are related.
Okay, they are related?
Yes.
And they're three adults. Can you just share with me the dynamics or, and I don't know if this is a family unit, but if you can just share with me?
It's husband and wife, and the other, the husband and wife and the son. Then downstairs is husband and wife.
So, the three adults are husband, wife, and son. And the four children, what are their ages, do you know?
I don't have it off it.
Okay.
But the, the older kid, child is in middle school.
The oldest of the four?
Yes, is in middle school.
Okay.
And they, they have two that are in elementary school and a baby.
Okay, and what is your relation to the occupants on the upper level?
Landlord.
Your landlord, okay, so, you're leasing, you're leasing the top portion of your unit, of the house for seven people, and then you're also leasing the bottom portion?
Yes.
For two adults, okay. All right. When were the photos taken that you shared with us today?
That was on Saturday.
Okay.
Saturday.
Okay, these were taken this past Saturday?
Saturday, yes.
Okay. And did you take these photos, or did someone take them and send them to you?
I took the photos.
You took the photos personally?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have for the applicant, if you guys have any questions. No? Okay. Yolisa, would you mind joining us?
Good morning, Yolisa Foster, Cobb County Code Enforcement.
Okay, thank you. You shared some photos, I believe you inspected the property on yesterday. And was it yesterday or the day before? It was, yeah, yesterday, yesterday. You inspected the property and you, you forwarded photographs?
Yes, ma'am.
And the photos that you sent me yesterday are not consistent with what was shared today. Have you, when you were at the property on yesterday, was it you or someone else, by the way?
It was an officer that was at the property yesterday.
Okay, was there any additional information that was shared by the officer? Because we're, we're seeing like two different accounts of what the property's condition is.
So, the officer is stating that we are, throughout the whole process, is seeing progress, but it's a matter of the tenants storing items outside and not completely cleaning up everything. The children's toys are a violation of outside storage, that has to be removed as well. And looking at the pictures, they're, they did clean up most of the trash, but when you look around the property, there's small pieces of scattered trash. And also, looking at the property owner's pictures that was just shown, there's a box truck that is shown, a commercial vehicle that weighs over 12,500 pounds in gross weight. That's a violation of customary home occupation. We didn't catch the violation, but her picture from Saturday has the violation shown.
So, when you were there, you did not identify that vehicle on Saturday? Or have you identified it any other time?
We did get a, we, we didn't identify it, but we did have it mentioned in a complaint.
Okay.
That, that was the initial complaint about the box truck parked in the yard and eight vehicles parked at the property regularly.
In your most recent report, how many, how many vehicles, how many vehicles did you guys identify or confirm? Is that the box truck in this photo?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that's consistently parked there?
The officer has not seen the box trucks at the property and has documented that it has been removed from the property. So, basically, with them having that picture showing that it's there on a Saturday, what we would have to do is put the case for, on early morning inspections, which would allow us to catch the violation because it appears that the truck is being removed during our business hours.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask, just, okay. So, with the eight vehicles, has there been a reduction in the number of vehicles over the past months? Or at least by February 29th?
During the day, we do see that there is not as many vehicles there, but that's because it's during the day. We definitely would have to conduct an early morning inspection to see how many vehicles do they really have. We did not conduct the inspection because they applied for a temporary land use permit.
Okay, so, when you identified the eight vehicles, that was during the early morning inspections?
We did not conduct early morning inspections since they went through zoning. Had they not go through zoning, we would have did the early morning inspections, and then we would have cited them for single-family dwelling.
Right, but my question is, for the eight that you identified, at one point, you identified eight, were those identified during an early morning inspection?
No. We, we have not identified the eight vehicles. It was given to us as a complaint, but we have not identified it at all.
All right, that's good, thanks for that clarification. Okay. I don't have any more questions for you, Yolisa, unless you guys have some.
Yes. There's a family intact that's upstairs with three adults, then a family of two adults that are living in the basement. So, how many unrelated adults would that be?
They have, well, they would have five. I mean, they have the family, that's three. And then they would allow, if it was just that family, they would be allowed to have one unrelated adult in the house with them. But now they have two extras because now the downstairs is being rented out.
Well, let's, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Drew. Were you done?
I'm done.
Okay, so, there are a total of five unrelated adults?
Well, it's two separate families, it's the three family that's related, and then the other two that's related, but...
Okay, now, just for clarification, because they're unrelated and they're on separate floors, but for purposes of the code, are we looking at unrelated adults in each, I'll just say, unit? Or are we looking at the entire house? Because the code is based on the square footage for the entire property. So, we're asked to consider another unrelated adult. And is that consideration based on the entire property? My thought is that it is. And if that is the case, then it would be a total of five unrelated adults at the property?
Yes, it is based off of the property in itself, which is zoned for a single family. And they have two families in a single family dwelling.
Okay, so, I guess that presents an even greater challenge.
This is a challenge with our code. I mean, it multiplies, it's not necessarily with the code. And trust me, I think there are questions about this application, which is why I'm bringing attention to that. But I remember there was a caregiver and then two related adults, and then they were counting each of the relationships of each adult to that caregiver.
I can't speak on a caregiver because...
This was several years ago.
I did speak with the officers, and they said they were never advised of any medical issues or any...
I'm not saying here, I'm just talking about the count. That's why I just wanted to be clear on the count. I don't know, when I saw this case being presented, I just didn't presume the construct, what you have is somebody splitting a single-family home into, into a duplex, making it a duplex.
Exactly.
And, you know, is that something that we want to support? That's a, to me, that's a very strong policy assertion. I mean, when she also said she felt bad for them, I'm thinking she lives, she's living upstairs, and she's leasing to somebody else. But this comes across as just an arms-length landlord-tenant relationship, which comes across as more of a monetary incentive than, than a personal, yes, heart push. I don't know where to start.
Commissioner Burrell, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I think the confusion was with leasing out the two floors to two different families is the issue that I would have. And the applicant doesn't live there. She's leasing it out, and it's more than the unrelated adults, so, it doesn't comply. Because I, I was under the same oppression, impression that one, I didn't know there were two separate families, entities on the two floors. And I was thinking that one, you know, was a family, and then one outside caregiver. But they have two, I thought they had two unrelated caregivers, but that's not the case. And the applicant doesn't live on the site, she's leasing out as a multifamily home.
Right.
I don't support that.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, I certainly concur with the commentary made here. It introduced some new dimension to the case with it being a lease agreement and these being two separate families, we're kind of treating this as two separate units. But to that, on the code, I am curious on what that number of unrelated, what the request actually would be because you could look at it where there is a currently family, there's a family of three related adults on the top floor with the four kids, and then you have one other unrelated that's permitted. But since they're bringing husband-wife, is it plus one more? So, are we saying we need to get an additional one unrelated adult? Or do we look at this as, because it's still not five unrelated, it's, or is it, to what Chairwoman was saying, is it on each relationship, kind of if you do that diagram, we have two and three? How do we do that calculation? I'm not clear. And possibly, it's just because we don't have single-family units, that would be sold, that would be leased out as separate units?
Right.
As duplexes, and so, possibly, we don't really even need to solve for that, you know?
Yes, and that's why I brought up the caregiver scenario, because that's the only time I've heard of that type of analysis.
Right, right, the two downstairs are not connected to the family upstairs. It would be different if it was a caregiver.
Yes, that they're separate.
Which is what I thought this original application is.
Forgive, forgive my analysis, I was just trying to get a count. We can do that, that can be done at a later time. I think, to me, the biggest issue here is that this applicant is not living in the home.
Right.
Commissioner Gamble?
John, do we know if the applicant pulled a permit to finish the basement?
I do not know that, Commissioner Gamble.
So, without knowing if a... So, without knowing if a permit's been pulled, we also have potential health and safety well-being? Because inspections wouldn't have been done?
I hear that. I hear that, you know. I know, you know, I look at what's being done in some cities where they're accommodating multi-family living in a single-family unit. We have just never approached that really as a board yet. And I think approval of this would be pushing us to consider a policy that we have yet to give thought to yet on a comprehensive way. So, that makes me very concerned. And I hear that if it's something that we do support, I can see us making sure, as Commissioner Gamble shared, that we do have proper living space for all those living, living in that single-family unit. And this part goes to why pictures may be different. If you're not living there, it's hard to know what's going on on your property.
I don't have any other questions for you, Lisa, but I would like the applicant to approach, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I just have two follow-up questions. The first is to my colleague's point, did you apply for a permit to finish the basement?
No.
You did not? Is there a particular reason you did not?
I thought maybe you only need permits to build a new place. I didn't know I have to get a permit because the basement has already been framed down, framed out. All we just did was to attach walls. It's not like we were the one that built the basement. I mean, what I'm saying is it's been structured with frames. So, I didn't know we have to pull a permit. But electrical has already been there. Things have already been there like that. So, what I mean by finishing is just, I think the way I saw it was it's already been finished. Before, I think something was pulled out or damages and then we just fixed them back. It's not like I started from the beginning because I just bought it in 2022.
Okay. Okay. So, you purchased it in 2022?
Yes.
Have you lived there at any point?
No.
You've never lived there at any point? Okay. So, in 2022, has any of the applicant, I'm sorry, the occupants that are there now, have any or all of them lived there since 2022?
Yes.
Okay. All of them or?
The ones upstairs.
The ones upstairs have lived there since 2022? I don't know how to ask this, but was this property purchased as a primary residence for you? Or as an investment property?
Second home or whatever they call, what is it called or something?
Pardon? Did you purchase this home for you to live in it or for purposes of renting it?
For second, property of rent, I don't know. I have a house that I live in already. I just bought it as a second property. I don't know what it is.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. I don't have any other questions unless you guys do.
I have a follow-up question, ma'am. In the photo, we see the driveway, but in another one of the photos, we saw a driveway that would be to the left of the home. Ezra's, when was that driveway added?
2023.
Thank you. And again, was there a permit when you went to add the driveway?
I only called, I was told to call 611 to find out if you can do stuff there. And they came out to let me know the places are.
The utility locations. Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
There are other code enforcement issues too besides the number.
Well, this one definitely has its challenges. It initially came before us as a code enforcement complaint with there being outside storage, litter, and other items about the property. But it's come to our attention, at least to my attention now, that the property is actually serving as a duplex. And my understanding from the original application was that the owner or the applicant lived upstairs and the downstairs was being leased by an unrelated adult who wanted to provide caregiving to another unrelated adult. So, coming in, that is what I thought we were being asked to consider, but it's a far more complex issue now. And I'm just not sure in terms of code, I'm just not sure how to move forward because I've never seen where we had a single-family residence that's just being used as a duplex. So, I'm kind of stumped on this one. Bill, can you provide a little?
You can only handle what's before you, not what's been revealed. So, I mean, there's just an application before you. You could either grant it or deny it. And then code enforcement can still enforce the rules that the code enforcement has before it in order to be able to make determinations that would then ultimately come before you or before magistrate court.
I mean, I understand what's before me, but part of my decision is based on something that's not totally accurate. And that's where I'm having the challenge. I'm open to recommendations. What do you guys think? Have you guys, my more senior commissioners, have you guys seen anything like this? Or had a case like this before you in the past?
Well, I have, but usually with, you know, unrelated, not two separate families and not being related. But I think the issue is that it's a rental property and the applicant doesn't live on-site. If it was a family and two caregivers unrelated, that would be a different scenario that, you know, someone's disabled or needed help or.
Ma'am?
But that's not.
Ma'am, not at this time. I'm sorry. We'll have to, we'll have to call you up for you to speak. And when you speak, you'll have to do it from the mic, but we'll call you up.
And there's other code violations with the outdoor storage that you, Lisa, addressed and the box car, box truck. And also, I know staff has recommended denial in our book, but was this addressed in PC in February? Because I don't see it in the March, ma'am.
No. It wasn't, yeah. This was a February PC case, but they didn't address all these other issues that you're talking about right now.
No. I mean, was there recommendation denial or?
It was to approve it for 12 months, subject to code enforcement to visit the property quarterly.
And we'll go down the line, but I mean, it further confirms now why the property is not kept very well. Because the landlord is not on-site. And that's where I have my other challenge. Because I understand what you are attempting to do and what you have done. And it's commendable and noble. But the other side to that is it doesn't appear by the code violations or even the condition of the property that you're very present at the property. So, the fact that we have so many code enforcement violations, repeated violations, it doesn't signal to me that there is a genuine concern for the way the property looks or even the consideration or the lack of consideration to the neighbors. Now, I understand that there is a disabled person at the property and that's what was before us for consideration to, again, consider a caregiver for the other unrelated adult. I understand that. And I understand Legal's point that that's what's before us to consider. But again, part of my consideration was not based on some of what I've heard today. My assumption was that the owner lived at the property. The owner would be able to have a greater oversight over the property, but that's not the case and is supported by the code enforcement violations. There's a commercial vehicle on the property. There are several code violations. So, I don't know that, again, there's really concern about the property or there's concern about leasing the property. And that's where I'm torn.
Commissioner Richardson?
So, if we are to take Bill's direction head-on, what's before us is to approve or deny the additional unrelated person. We're not necessarily contemplating the commercial vehicle that's still considered a code violation, all the other pieces. So, what I'm thinking, or what I would think is we would, I'm in favor of denying the additional unrelated person because we have received information regarding why there's a need for an unrelated person. And that need why is not necessarily for caregiving purposes. It's not for some of these hardships that we've been considering. It's for leasing. And that is not something, I mean, that's a policy decision. I think I agree with the Chair on that front, that this would kind of put the policy decision before the, before the board, before we even considered something like that. So, under that determination of a denial, we could do like six months to come into compliance. That would give her the time to do whatever needs to be done with regards to the leasing for whichever family. But that's, she has the authority to lease, rent out her property. But that would give her time to come in compliance with the request itself. And then, of course, code enforcement will work some of the other outstanding issues. But that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Commissioner Gamble?
My biggest concern is if you read the application and what it has said on the application as to why the land use permit is being requested. None of that information was presented today. So, my question then becomes, have we received a, you know, false application? With the fact that the information on the application does not seem to be correct, given the testimony, I would recommend denying it and then giving a certain time limit to come into compliance with a single-family residential home.
I'll piggyback on that. There are a number of questions you asked the applicant that may not seem crystal clear to the applicant. I can be generous and say she may have perceived the one unrelated person was permitted, but she was having two unrelated because one was a caregiver. So, I don't necessarily perceive that, unless I ask more questions, that ill-intent was the objective or violation of policy was her objective. But to me, this does not comport with our policy. So, I'm supportive of Commissioner Richardson's proposal. There are people who are living there that perhaps there is a caregiving need. So, I would be thoughtful to give them time to transition out of that. But I'd also have a corresponding request for court media development to help us think through if this is something that we want to consider in our policy as we look at affordable housing. And we say we have the missing middle of the duplex, triplex, quadruplex. Now, this is consideration of a duplex, you know. But we also see that there needs to be tighter parameters on it because people that are living around here are expecting a single-family home living. And when you have two families living in a property and also these type of violations of code on a recurring basis, it's just, to me, the intensity of it is bothering, you know. They, if it was just a violation of the people and all of these other issues were not a part of the application, I might, I'm not even sure I'd be more amenable to it. But does all of these violations compound the general policy deviation that make it difficult to support this? But again, considering and giving the applicant the benefit of the doubt that there is a caregiving relationship that is on the lower level, I'm amenable to giving them time to transition into another, to another living situation.
Okay. Okay. Let me just look at my calendar quickly. So, that would be September. So, before I make the motion, I need to make clear on something. And I don't know if this is a legal question or if this is a John question. But in a scenario where I would offer six, in six months to come into compliance as a single-family property, I don't know if at that point, and I would assume at that point, it would be on the applicant to decide which of the two families would stay. I'm just trying to figure out if I need to include in that to bring it into single-family code compliance.
If your motion is to deny it worth a clerk's note with a timeframe when they had to come to compliance, but they also made our single-family code, then we can enforce that after the timeframe's expired.
Okay.
So, they could still have three people upstairs, three adults and one downstairs. I'm not sure what they're gonna do about the caregiver who has to come and go, but they can work that out.
Right. Okay. Okay.
On the application, it has one of the two unrelated. I thought the two downstairs were related. And so, is it, but they're not, they're not connected to the family upstairs as a caregiver or anything, correct?
That's right.
So, is one of the two in the basement disabled and that's their caregiver?
She testified that it was a couple that were living downstairs.
That were related.
And there was no, in the testimony, there was no mention that they required a caregiver to come in.
Right. And since.
Not upstairs, right.
Right. But to your point, Commissioner, her testimony, she indicated that the couple in the basement were related. So, then the assumption then is that the unrelated adults on the top level, so one of the three adults on the top level is being asked for consideration to be a caregiver. Because she said that the couple.
I didn't get that at all.
No, but Commissioner Sheffield, in her testimony, she said the two, it sounded like it was a husband-wife and an adult son and then four children was what her testimony was.
Right. Upstairs.
Upstairs.
Right. But she also indicated that downstairs, they were married. Right.
Right. But the unrelated, and they could have one of the two downstairs. That would be the one unrelated. But since there's two of them downstairs, they are unrelated to the five upstairs. So, that means two. So, one of them would have to leave.
Right. I understand that. But my thought, my thought is that these are two separate families with no relation.
Correct.
Correct. Right. Okay. Right. Okay. All right. We don't want to muddy this, I don't think, any more than what we have. Because it looks like we're headed in that direction.
Commissioner Sheffield, and I would just, again, we're being very sensitive to the applicant. I want to be sensitive to the neighbors.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, that the neighbors are continuing to see things that really, you know, they don't want to have to continue to live with. And for them, six months might be too much for them to have to live for another half of a year under these conditions. So, I think even though code enforcement is not directly related to how we disposition a zoning case, I think it's important for the applicant to be aware that we've got to get these zoning issues, excuse me, these code enforcement issues beyond the two unrelated adults addressed.
Right. Okay. Thank you for that. Okay. June. Okay. I am prepared to make my motion if we're done with discussion.
We're done, okay. I make a motion to deny LUP 3 2024 with the condition to bring the property into single-family code no later than June 19th, 2024. Is there a second, or at least with discussion?
That's 90 days.
Commissioner.
Three months.
What, Mr. Peterson had recommended to do a clerk's note because that's the only thing that's before you is just the application.
Gotcha, okay, all right.
But you can say that for code enforcement, clerk's note enforcement after that period of time.
Okay, so I make a motion to deny LUP 3 2024 with a clerk's note, right, to add a condition to bring the property into single-family code no later than June 19th, 2024.
No, the code enforcement would then enforce that after the time you're allowing them to get into compliance.
Okay.
You're basically asking code enforcement to be held in abeyance for enforcement of that procedure until after you're giving them for the-
Okay. All right, with code enforcement to hold it in abeyance until, until that date.
And I will second with discussion.
Okay.
Is that just for the single-family home or what, or for the number of people? Or is that for all the code enforcement violations?
Well, it was for the application request that was denied.
We can only address the LUP. We can't address the other code issues.
Right.
So code enforcement will be able to follow up on the other issues in any timeframe? Okay.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Richardson? Gamble? All right, there is a motion, believe a second. We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Okay, moving into other business cases. First case we're going to hear today is other business item number 40 of 2023, which is to consider amending the site plan for Curly Family Homes LLC regarding rezoning application Z 43 of 2019. The property is located on the southeast side of Cooper Lake Road, south of Vinings Lake Drive, and land lot 181 of the 17th District. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 40? Three? Okay, let's record, show there's three people opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
Oh, John, is there anyone here in support of Obi 40?
Okay, is there anyone here in support of other business item 40? Please stand and raise your hand. Let's record, so there's no one here in support.
Thank you. Kevin, you can begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Again, good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Kevin Moore here on behalf of Curly Family Homes in this other business application for a revised site plan approval for this project, which is a piece of property that's 9.9, basically 10 acres, that's located off Cooper Lake Road, adjacent to a couple of different neighborhoods, but primarily Vinings Lake, the retreat at Vinings Lake, neighborhood and subdivision that's located along its northern boundary. As this is a, simply a site plan amendment, it's one that's been held for a number of months, and I want to explain that to those of you who have not been involved with it. This original rezoning that was done for this property several years ago, when it was rezoned to RA 5, what's on your screen is the rezoning approved final site plan. So this was the final site plan that was approved for 49 townhomes. But a part of that approval, and perhaps the most major part of that approval, was at the time, our working with the adjoining Retreat at Vinings Lake subdivision and their homeowners association to attain their support for this rezoning. And what we had done is we'd worked through a very lengthy list of stipulations and conditions, primarily related to stormwater issues, but also some other things that we had worked through with them to make sure that they were going to be a part of the process, not just at the zoning stage, but in the future as well. And I give you that context because what we've been doing the last several months is while we are only proposing a site plan change and not proposing to change any conditions that have already been agreed to, that are already a part of this that involve that, one of the big issues was stormwater and the effect on Vinings Lake, or their lake, which is their subdivision lake, which is owned by the HOA. They wanted to make sure that our hydrology study and stormwater management plan, because this is moving forward to permitting, worked for the new plan, essentially. They have independent review by independent engineers on their behalf that they've retained that are part of this process. They want to make sure that that engineering team had a chance to review our updated hydrology to reflect the revised site plan. And so it just took some time for that to occur. I'm happy to report that at the end of last week, that analysis did, was completed and was, we did receive the, I don't really want to call it sign off because they're not approving it, they're an independent engineer retained by the HOA. But they did concur with the hydrology study that our engineers had put together for the revised site plan. And that was the big important step, and that's why this has been held so that could occur. I know that's a lot of history, but it will help understand what's going forward today for your consideration. So let's turn to the site plans now. Thank you. First, let me just highlight a couple of things. Again, this is the site plan in arrangement and design that was approved as part of the rezoning, the prior rezoning that occurred. And just so that you can see the arrangement, this again is the retreat at Vinings Lake. Vinings Lake lies just beyond here, which is the lake owned by the, by the HOA. I'm going to now show you what is the revised site plan. And you can see the major difference in the two site plans. And I think that we have had a lot of supportive comments received from the HOA because of the difference in these two site plans. And I'll show them to you again. I feel like I'm the eye doctor. Do you like A or B better? But this is the original approved site, site plan. And I really want to point out to you, we had, in this site plan, you have the townhomes arranged here. Those are homes in the retreat at Vinings Lake here that back up and back up to each other. And then notice the difference now. All of this area now, that it essentially becomes buffer area between the homes with this design and layout. And I think that we, we think this is a far better site plan for the obvious reasons. Number one, it makes a far more efficient use of the topography of the property itself, which is severe in some areas. It also allows for much greater distance in this area here so that you don't have the townhomes right adjacent to, so many townhomes adjacent to so many homes. It does create an area right here where there's some adjacent townhomes now to these two homes that weren't there before. But we've addressed that in alternative measure, and I'll show you that. Because part of what we've also agreed to that was submitted yesterday for your consideration today, we had provided this final landscape, a landscape plan and tree save plan as part of the review with the neighboring homeowners association. The areas in green are designated tree save areas. And this is the area we're really concerned about is right here. And so this has mature trees. It slopes down a hill from there. So what was important for these homeowners is to ensure that that row of trees, existing trees that is there, is kept. And then beyond that, we have an additional landscape buffer to fill that in where we'll be planting additional trees. And so that's what we have done to address that issue there that only affects those two there. And that's from my letter of yesterday. We just had to go through again, catching up with the HOA as we've been in their representatives, as we wanted to make sure these items were in front of them for their consideration. The, one of the things that also is important here, the existing approved plan, which is the plan that was approved at the rezoning, that had made its way from, by Curly Family Homes through the permitting process. It was very near, very near the end of receiving an LDP and going forward when the project engineers and Curly Family Homes got together back in September and realized there was a better way, there was a better site plan, offered better protection overall to the adjoining neighbors, offered a more sensitive plan for development, given the topography. And that's why we move forward with this application for other business because it was a specifically approved site plan. The, the issue we have now in front of us is simply one of, we believe that site plan is far, far superior. And from a stormwater standpoint, we've demonstrated, and the HOA's engineers have agreed that our, for our stormwater plan and hydrology study will, have been, in essence, agreed upon by the engineers as meeting the protections and needs. Regardless of which plan, the stormwater is going to be the stormwater. It has to be addressed according to the comments and recommendations and stipulations that were made at the time of the rezoning. Those list and list and list of stipulations and conditions of rezoning address specifically stormwater review and address specifically the protections that are above and beyond for Vinings Lake. Those are all, remain in place. We are not proposing, and this site plan doesn't change a single stipulation in, or condition in the original rezoning. It only changes the site plan. And it provides for a far better design. And I said that because I know that this board, you deal with these types of proposals often. But for those who may not be familiar or who may have other concerns, this has already been zoned, it's already been entitled. We're not trying to change the deal we made that we retained support from the adjacent homeowners association. We are not proposing a single change or modification to those conditions. We believe in those conditions, as does the HOA. We only think that a better site plan exists for development of this site. We've worked very well hand in glove with them and continue that. And I think that that's going to come through when they speak to you here in a moment. But with that, we'd appreciate your consideration and your approval and respectfully request your approval of this site plan change. Please also include, if you do want to approve it, my letter of March 18th, which includes the detailed landscape and tree save plan which we had provided and that we have added to this as an additional measure. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now, let me ask just to be certain, is there anyone here to speak in support? Okay, we'll now go to opposition. There are multiple people that stood up, and we'll have 10 minutes to be shared among all.
Thank you. My name is Robin Meyer, and I co-chair the zoning committee for the Mableton Improvement Coalition. We appreciate very much Curly Family Homes giving this site plan a second look because we very much support the second site plan. It's a much better use of the land, to my eye. It creates less impervious surface because there's, the road system is so much more compact. And so we appreciate their patience and, as well as their investment in Mableton because they are ready to proceed. We do have just two additional asks. The first is that the buildings on the property be demolished by July 1st of this year. It's my understanding from talking with Mr. Moore that that's agreeable to them. I understand that Curly's ready to start, but, you know, we thought when this property was zoned five years ago that somebody was ready to start, and those homes are in terrible condition now. And then, secondly, we would ask that consideration be given to the, to proper assurances for the folks who live at the retreat at Old Vinings Lake related to stormwater runoff. So I think you'll hear a little bit more about that from the next two speakers. So thank you very much, and we wholeheartedly support the approval of this application.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Young. I'm the president of the Retreat at Old Bonnies Lake Home Association.
Thank you, Steve. We're having some difficulty hearing speakers today. You can just lean, yes, that'd be great.
Okay, thanks, okay. The, we are in general agreement with Kevin on his assessment. The homeowners association is very pleased that Curly has worked with us to make sure that the stormwater running off their property would not adversely impact our lake. We have a number of issues with the lake right now, and we don't need any more added on top of that. So we're very appreciative of the work they've done. Our only concern really at this point is there is a small pond on the northeast corner of our properties. Actually, it's a privately owned pond. Three of the homeowners in our subdivision are responsible for maintaining that pond. And you'll hear from one of them shortly. And we are just concerned that, you know, any changes to the plan here could adversely affect that pond and, and the properties, the actual, you know, inhabited parts of the property. So that's really our only concern. But apart from that, we are supportive of the redevelopment plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Nana. As Steve said, I live on Vinings, can y'all, can y'all hear me well? This is good?
Yes, sir, you're good, thank you.
Okay, I live on Vinings Lake Drive. I live on one of the properties that backs up to the pond. Now, the pond connects to the bigger lake, Summerlin Lake, which is owned by the HOA. But as Steve said, this pond is privately owned by the three homes that back up to it. So I can see the pond from my backyard. And I think initially, as we're going through this process with Curly Family Homes, the understanding was that whatever assurances they were given by way of the insurance policy was going to cover everything related to the lake. But I asked Steve a couple of days ago, hey, does this cover us, the homes that back up to this pond? And he indicated that he thinks so, but we need to get clarification. So we emailed, I think, the lawyers, and they indicated that, as currently stated, the stipulation covers the lake that is owned by the HOA, not necessarily the pond. So really just asking, at this point, I agree with Steve, that the new site plan looks much better. But just asking that for the three homeowners who have our property backing up to the pond, and given that the pond connects to the bigger lake, and also the development is going to be right behind the pond, actually. The lake is further down, development is going to be right, closer to the pond, that we will be included in any kind of insurance policy. So in case there is anything that happens with stormwater that we will be not, we will not be left with undue financial burden. Another thing to add that made me want to talk about this is when you read the statement from our independent engineers, it stated that they think, in the third paragraph, they think that the stormwater is going to increase as a result of development, and also that it's going to take a longer time for the water to drain away, so to speak. So as a homeowner hearing this, that's a little bit concerning, and I understand that this is going forward, but I just wanted to be included specifically in that insurance policy to make sure that if anything were to happen, the unexpected, that we would be covered. Lastly, obviously, the HOA is funded by about three of the homes, and it's just three of us over there. It's great that we have that little pond, but also it comes with its responsibilities. So I'll make the point that we're maybe a little bit more also vulnerable than maybe everybody else that's supported by the HOA. And so I just want to share our concerns, just to make sure that we're covered there. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you sharing that with us. Is there anyone else here in opposition? Okay, John, if you can share with us staff's recommendation, please.
Madam Chair, the staff would recommend the board approve the request subject to, number one, the letter from Kevin Moore dated March 18th, 2024, which includes the site plan, the tree protection plan, and the tree replacement plan. Number two, the stormwater management comments contained in the other business packet. Number three, COBT comments contained in the other business packet. Number four, fire department comments contained in the other business packet. And number five, all previous conditions not in conflict remain in effect.
Thank you, John. I'll turn things over to the district commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. Steve, if you wouldn't mind joining us.
Regarding the pond that's on the HOA's property, with your hydrology report, was that, was that addressed at all in the hydrology report?
Okay.
Have you had any, pardon, any conversations with your engineers regarding the lake that's on your property?
Okay, there, there's two bodies of water. There's the publicly, well, publicly, the HOA-owned lake, which is further to-
Right there.
Yes. Okay, and then there's a very small privately owned pond on the northeast corner.
Okay.
And that, we, the HOA has no government. In fact, there's a codicil in our covenants which specifically delineates the ownership and responsibility for that pond.
Okay.
So, you know, as the HOA, we can't directly address that, in that we have no legal standing for that pond, apart from the fact it drains into it. But if you, could you go back to the, one of those site plans with, and I can explain it a little bit better. Okay, if you look in the upper right-hand corner, you can see there's a lot of dotted lines right there in the corner.
Yes.
What that is, is it's a natural aquifer that feeds that pond, and that's protected. My understanding is that that is protected, and the site plan that Curly Homes has submitted acknowledges that. Well, that's, that feeds into the pond, and anything flowing off that hill and where that detention pond is going to go, is going to feed into that pond. That pond ultimately, there's a creek that comes off that pond that feeds into the lake. So ultimately, it's a feeder to the lake.
Okay.
But it is, the pond now is directly affected by this development, and I believe that's what Nana is concerned about, is the fact that he and his neighbors have that concern.
Okay. And for the property owners that are responsible for that pond, Canulius, if you can put up the other, the other image, would that be the three houses to the north? Do you know how many homeowners are responsible for that pond?
Three.
Three? Okay, all right. That's all I have for Steve, if anyone else has any questions for him. I have a few questions for the applicant. I know that you met with the HOA and perhaps some homeowners. Can you address the concern for the pond, the private pond on the retreat's property?
Sure, I can. The small pond, as a part of the overall system there, under the currently approved plan, our stormwater goes through that small pond. That's the way it goes. And then, from the pond to Summerlin Lake or Vinings Lake, whichever way you want to call it, to the larger lake owned by the HOA. That pond is privately owned, and the maintenance of that pond, for stormwater purposes, as Steve pointed out, is the responsibility of those three private property owners. All right, our engineers already identified that there's a lack of maintenance that's occurred at that small pond that needs to be addressed, that those folks need to address. And our hydrology study, our stormwater management plan demonstrates, as the, and the engineers agreed with that demonstration, all of them, that we are meeting the proper stormwater controls and stormwater management, and ensuring that, from at least from the design and engineering at this point, that all of that is being met. And we have conditions and stipulations in the existing approved zoning that also ensure that that occurs, and also ensures of the HOA's involvement, beyond anything we normally ever see in terms of involvement. So all of that is being addressed. The current, but the, there isn't, the difference, there is no difference between the impact on that small pond, between the currently approved plan, which we're a week away from getting a permit if we wanted to, and the proposed plan we have. And Curly has waited and waited and waited, owns the property now, so now they're paying interest and interest and interest to try to develop this property. And they've got to, they've either got to develop under the current approved plan, or develop under this plan, and they just have to move forward. And we're, they have taken and been fantastic partners to this HOA, who've said that each and every time. And I just, I want to really emphasize, emphasize that, and we're, are in agreement with what Robin Meyer proposed as far as additional conditions. We're fine with that. Those don't make any difference.
And just a follow-up question.
Sure.
Well, a question regarding the topography or the site plan. I understand part of the reason we have a new plan for consideration is that there were some topography challenges on this site. So when you compare the old to the new, because it appears now that with the new site, the townhomes are, they've moved farther south, so that leaves a little bit more impervious surface. And I was just trying to figure out side-by-side comparison with the different site plans, how impactful or less impactful is this revised plan to the original plan as it relates to this pond?
There's, this, the proposed plan has less overall impervious surface, not by a substantial margin. It does have less overall impervious surface. And so, but as it relates to the small pond, and the impact, or the difference between the impact, is negligible. There is no difference, other than, you do have less impervious surface that you're going to be accounting for under the proposed plan, which I, which is conceptually and theoretically better.
Okay. All right, just switching gears a little bit on a different question. I went back and I read the stipulation letter from December 17th of 2019.
Yes.
And the minutes made, mentioned, or noted, an unnamed structure between lots 28 and 29 of the former plan. With the new plan, lots 28 and 29 are adjacent parcels. So for the unnamed structure, I'm not sure if that was intended to be some type of amenity area, or a gazebo of some sort. Can you explain what that was supposed to be, and if it's been moved on the revised plan?
Yes, there was an area, if I could turn to the plan, I'll show you.
Okay.
All right, so, the, let me go back to the original approved plan. In the original approved plan, what is shown right, and we may have to focus in on it a little bit, if you could help me. Thank you. Right there.
Yes.
Is a very small structure that was just going to be identified as a community gathering, like, pavilion, or it didn't really, wasn't identified in the stipulations, but it was supposed to be a community gathering structure, be it a pavilion or something to that, that impact there. Once we move to our proposed plan here, which has not, this proposed plan, please note, has not gone through the plan review as of yet, would either occur here, here, or up in this area here, where there's a mail kiosk, but that's where it would go.
Well, it looks like...
To satisfy that condition.
Okay, because it looks like for the, but near the mail kiosk, I don't see where there would be a room to put a gazebo or structure, even if that would be an appropriate place. But I guess that, that's something that we can just work through and plan with you.
Sure, absolutely. Or it'll be, this is also a good location, or right where there's little parking, where there could be a similar, small community gathering amenity structure. That's correct.
All right. I don't have any more questions for Kevin, unless you guys have something to ask.
Thank you for the question to clarify that. That was, that's a good clarification. Thank you.
Okay, doesn't seem like there are any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was writing. Okay, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Vice Chair.
Hello, Andrew Heath, Cobb Stormwater Management.
Hey, Andrew. I had a couple of questions. Hold on, let me get to stormwater. Let's see, I think I had just one question for clarification on stormwater number three. Your comment, let's see. Your comment's number three, there's a recommendation with respect to lots 22 through 27, and that there's steep terrain there, and extensive grating or walls would be required to direct stormwater runoff. Now, I know in the new plan, that's still quite a ways from the pond that's on the property, but can you talk to us a little bit about your findings for those three parcels?
Yes.
Or six parcels?
Yes, and on the site plan that you see on the screen, those six are the ones at the far bottom right, in that little portion of the parcel that juts out there at the end of the cul-de-sac. And although that site plan doesn't make it clear, from about where the cul-de-sac is, toward that property line to the right, the topography is quite steep going downhill. And so, it isn't clear how those properties runoff is going to get back to the pond. The drainage back to the east there is eventually going to reach the actual lake. It's going to flow into the little stream, and eventually to the lake. And it is going to have to flow across some, unless it were somehow captured and directed to the, to the other storm drain system, because of the topography, it isn't quite clear to me, just looking at this, how they would do that. But if it were to be captured and go back to the pond, then it would be part of their overall treatment system. As it is now, it looks like it wants to drain away to the east. And there are some lots there in, to the immediate east of that property line at that lower corner, that are in the retreated Old Vinings subdivision. A lot of that area, many of those lots are very deep lots, so the home is more on the front of the lot, and the lot is very deep and wooded at the rear. And so, some of that water may not be as noticeable to homeowners that are there, but nevertheless, our baseline, you know, goal, when we're evaluating something for stormwater management, is that we're not increasing the rate of runoff, you know, at any point where water leaves the property. And so, you know, if this site plan is approved, we would have to pay attention to that area when it came through plan review, to see how they could, how they could address that in that particular area, and they would have to demonstrate that to us.
Okay. And also, it was shared earlier in opposition that the stormwater will obviously increase, and there's a concern with the impact that it'll have on the pond. And there was also a statement made that it will drain slowly. But if you can just kind of walk us through and just share with us how the detention pond will help to mitigate some of those concerns.
Right, and as they mentioned, in either site plan, there's a detention pond in place, and so the effect is going to be similar with either case. The way detention works in any development is, right now, the parcel is wooded, and you don't have as much runoff from the parcel. And then, when it's developed, you have more impervious area, and so that creates more runoff. And so, the way we manage that is we capture somehow that runoff that's running off the property quickly, and we release that more slowly, so we try to mimic what was releasing in the predeveloped condition. The flip side of that is that because more of the property is impervious in the developed condition, you actually get more volume of runoff. If you could measure it in gallons, you'd have more gallons of runoff after development than you did before. So the total volume of water that's going to leave the site will be greater, but they manage the rate of runoff by controlling it in the pond to meter that flow out, so it's not as much. So, homeowners that are downstream, and this is no doubt what their engineer was trying to explain to them, the homeowners in that pond, no doubt, are going to see an attenuated flow from the pond, but that flow is going to continue for a longer period of time than it would have, as it is right now, where it rains, there's runoff, and then the runoff stops. Now it's going to rain, the rainfall's going to stop, but there's going to be a continuous little trickle for maybe another couple of days or something, until the pond fully drains back down.
Gotcha.
That isn't necessarily a problem. I noticed in looking at both the previous comments for the original zoning that was Z43 as well, and they spoke about it as well, that that pond adjacent to that needs to be considered in the routing, you know, of that water, as we look how that water's going downstream to the lake. And so, if there are maintenance issues that are there in that pond, that is the off-site pond, the one that's in the retreat at Old Lost Mountain, certainly those might need to be investigated, and it might be something that, because the volume of runoff going into the pond is being increased, we didn't specifically ask that to be done, but the applicant's engineers might investigate that pond, see what kind of maintenance needs to be done to it. And if there is something that, you know, when they're out there on site, that they could do to improve the efficiency of how that pond works, or something like that, that might be something that would be a great, you know, benefit to those homeowners, they might be able to do for them.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, did anyone from the county inspect the pond, just to include it in its analysis in terms of the stormwater impact? And if so, what is the current condition of the pond?
To my knowledge, no. This pond was probably constructed at a time when the county allowed the actual storage area of the water to be on individual lots, but then, the piping systems within the pond frequently are county maintained. But that leaves the vast majority of the pond, the actual, when you walked up and looked at the pond, and you say, oh, there's the pond, all of that area where the water is stored typically is, as they were mentioning, would typically be the property owner's responsibility. On more current, and I don't know exactly what the cutoff date was for that, probably sometime in the late 90s, but now we don't allow that anymore. We don't allow that detention to be on individual lots like that. And so, but there was a period of time there for, you know, probably more than a decade or so where that was allowed, and that seems to be the way this pond is designed. But I think the direct answer to your question is, I don't think there's been any attempt by the county to actually assess it. But if that's something we wanted to do, we could definitely do that, or as it moves forward, their engineering team could do that and could provide that analysis for us.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have for Andrew. You guys have any questions? DOT, Leggy, I have a couple of questions. I'm trying to find the revised notes.
Good morning, Leah Florham, DOT.
Good morning, Leggy. I'm trying to find my notes here, but I have a question regarding the site plan dated February 6th. I'm assuming that that is the latest plan, but I wanted to confirm whether or not it addressed your comments numbered 1G and 1I, but I'm trying to find your comments.
Let's see, is it 1G is, 1G is related to streets, private streets, recommended the private streets, lighting and utilities be constructed to the Cobb County standards. And my comment had been that it retains some elements of the, of noncompliant, which is the street perpendicular parking. And I think they have omitted that parking. If they have omitted that parking, then we will consider this. But I think they have labeled as well the roads as private, so, to both are true.
Okay, and also, there are notes here about perpendicular parking.
Correct. So they have eliminated, it looks like they have put it to the side, right? They're still there? Which were, oh, yes, so that is noncompliant, so it's still the case. But like I said, they have labeled the street, in answer to number I, they have labeled it private. So we will not, we will not take the streets as, accept those streets as public in the future.
Okay, but it is your recommendation to build it to county standard, even though it's private.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and also, for the call box, and I don't know if you can answer this, or if it's a question for fire, but I, I don't recall, or I don't think that it's required for this number of units. I know we had a code change some years ago, at least a year or so with fire. For the call box, is that referencing the fire call box?
Yeah, I am not clear.
That's in your comments I?
I'm not sure about that.
It says, your comments?
Yes.
In letter I, it says, "The site plan dated August 15th, 2023 shows roads labeled as private. No call box or gates are shown," and I just wanted to address that last part.
Any call box and gate locations being included in this site, on the site plan? So they were not shown. It's not that we're requiring it, we're just not... It's not that we're requiring it, we just not, don't see it in the plan, is what I understand.
Okay. And but is that specifically referenced to the fire call box or something else?
I honestly do not know what this was referring to.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have for Likiya.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have for you. Yeah. The applicant would approach just to provide a little clarification on that. Can you address the call box or gates in the comments with DOT?
Yes, there are no gates planned, so if you're not going to have, put up gates, you don't have a call box.
The call box for the gate, okay.
Correct.
All right. All right. Thank you for that clarification.
But these were private roads from the initial, just to, I want to make sure everybody understands the context. The original approved plan, the one that's been finally approved, had private streets, had perpendicular parking, it also had hammerheads.
Right, I saw that.
So, the number of inconsistencies has been reduced to only have a few perpendicular spaces, which is a current condition under the existing approved plan. Though this plan doesn't contain the hammerhead, which is a far better improvement from a DOT, and far better improvement from a fire safety standpoint as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Just to clarify, there's no language that we're considering a site plan approval for a private road, but language that can make it a public road later? Is there?
Okay. Okay. For those Likiya's comments that we can take it over later, is that what you communicated?
Yes, I mean, as long as the roads are built to public.
Public standard.
Public road standard.
If I could answer for the original approval that occurred in 2019, one of the stipulations is that the community shall have private streets, so there's not an option to address the commissioner's concern.
Thank you for sharing that.
Okay. And they will be built to public standard?
It states it'll be constructed to county standards as to composition, because there were a number of inconsistencies under the original plan.
Inconsistent with materials.
The only one now that exists is just the perpendicular, a little bit of perpendicular parking, which was also present in the approved plan.
Okay. And this site plan is reflective of sidewalks, it appears. Can you confirm that?
That's correct.
All right. Okay. That's all I have for Kevin.
Okay. Thank you for your questions.
Does anybody have questions? No? Are you guys starting to get hangry?
Yeah.
You may continue.
That means yes, probably. Proceed. Okay. Okay, let me get this all together here. All right. I appreciate you all joining us today and sharing your concerns regarding, regarding the pond. Obviously, as was shared earlier, anytime we have development, there is going to be some impact, but we're charged, our staff is charged, and the developers are charged to ensure it's as minimal impact as possible to adjacent homeowners. There was a reference to the pond having been neglected over the years. I can't confirm that or deny that at all. I'm not terribly familiar with the maintenance schedule of that pond, but if it is in need of maintenance, then my recommendation is obviously that it is maintained, and that would provide greater assurances in terms of any development runoff. But I am delighted that, to witness that the engineers and the stakeholders have reached a consensus on the hydrology study for the revised plan. As we heard earlier, this one has been held for several months to work in collaboration with the community, which I understand was also stipulated in the conditions in 2019. So, thank you all for working together with that. This will be brief. There's been a lot of meetings with the homeowners, with MIG and several others, and staff recommends approval of the item, and I am prepared to make my motion. Okay. I make a motion to approve OB 40, 2023, with the following conditions. Letter of agreeable stipulation from J. Kevin Moore dated March 18, 2024, that the houses on the properties are, on the properties are to be demolished no later than July 1, 2024, and that a gazebo or community gathering space is to be added to the site plan and approved during site plan review. Construction hours are to be Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and any damage caused to the adjacent roadways of the proposed development shall be repaired within 90 days of the project completion, and all other staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Commissioners, I have three additional other business items on our agenda. Our cases are trending at least 30 minutes per case, which could keep us here, you know, approximately to 2:00 p.m. I hear you, Commissioner Brougham, starving too. So, I would like to poll to see if we can take a break for lunch, if we can have a quick lunch, and hopefully get out of here by 2:00, by 2:00. I'm not going to underestimate, these cases could take 10 minutes apiece, but it, you know, the presenters have at least 10 minutes to present their matter. So, I would like to suggest that we take a lunch break, and it takes time to get lunch, particularly if you're ordering on the square, so like to see if a 40-minute break, if we came back by 1:15. Could that work?
Yeah.
All right. We'll recess until 1:15. Thank you.
[inaudible][1045.11]
We are still in our other business item portion of our agenda, and I'll turn things over to our zoning manager to get us ready for our next case.
Thank you. The next case we're going to hear is other business item number eight of 2024, which is to consider a reduction that required lot size from 20,000 square feet to 16,289 square feet for Terry Kastner. Property is located on the south side of West Point Drive, east of Liberty Lane, land lot 258 of the 20th District. The applicant is present, and there's no one here opposed at this point in time, so we ask the applicant to come forward to be sworn in.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Terry Kastner, and the lot that we're looking at was inherited from my father. And what I'm asking for is the reduction of the lot size. It was a, it's an older neighborhood, there was some land that was, like I said, was inherited from my dad, so... And if you look at the survey... You got that?
You want the side letter?
Yes, yes, sir.
I've got it here.
If I can let the board know what's going on, what we see on our screen is not the property that is up for consideration. This is actually Mr. Kastner's home. The property we are considering is now on the... It was now on... For our GIS team, is there a GIS review of the subject property? Okay, oh, okay, thank you. John, commission, excuse me, is that the property, sir?
That's it.
Okay.
That's it, yes, ma'am. And originally, the property, well, I'd hear it was a future development in this neighborhood.
Okay.
And there's actually 10-foot, if you see, you'll see a red line on the right-hand side of that, this lot there is extra, it's marked HOA summer hour. 10-foot of that was actually, goes from my lot across the road to the other side as well, the land was. But to get it surveyed, to include everything was going to be outrageous, the price, because you have to consider everybody else's lot and all that to know how the survey would look. So what I did, what we did was, we just kind of made it fit inconsistency, in a good consistent with the neighborhood. We surveyed it to where it is now, which is just under 20,000, just under 20,000 square feet. But if you include that 10-foot section that I didn't survey because of the expense, I just didn't have the fiduciary means to do that with. It would bring it closer to 18,000, 19,000. In fact, if you go on the other side of the road, on the other side of the lot, it would be about 20,000. So originally, it's about 20,000, but we're, we surveyed it just to have the, to fit the neighborhood of, which is just under 20,000.
Okay.
And I've also done a soil test on it, so it passed. And like I said, we're, there's nothing else... There's nothing else that, that, I'm basically trying to sell it, I'm not, I'm selling it is what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
And I just want to try to get the lot reduced down where it is acceptable in that neighborhood.
Okay.
And y'all got any questions or...
There may be questions, but we'll be happy to call you up if we do.
All right, yeah, if there's any concerns or anything, just let me know, I'd like to, you know, if there's any concerns I can address, I wouldn't mind tabling if I have to, but...
Okay.
Yeah, well, but yeah, I'd like to, I'd love for it to be passed, to get it reduced down, so I can sell it. It's for my estate, I'm really desperately trying to get the estate settled.
Okay.
It's been in probate for a long time, and it's put a real burden on us, so I really need, I really take into consideration you guys would be able to do this for me.
Thank you, appreciate you putting that in context.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in support of this other business item? We'll not hear from opposition. Yes, ma'am, you'll need to be sworn in before we get started. Just want to give a heads up for everyone who's here, we did not have all the applicants present when we began after 1:15. So we are starting now with other business item eight, and then we'll go back to other business items six and, and other business item seven.
Sixty-six.
Am I looking at my wrong agenda?
There is no seven, just six and sixty-six.
Why am I looking at the wrong? Sixty-six, thank you, I appreciate it, other business item sixty-six, thank you. Ma'am, if you could state your name for the record.
Thank you, good morning, good afternoon, my name is Robin McWaters, and I have lived in this subdivision of West Point subdivision in Kennesaw for over 35 years. Today, I've taken surveys from my fellow neighbors, and I have about, of the 48 homes, I've reached out to 38 people and have signatures on a petition against this proposal for Mr. Kastner. We're requesting that you deny this because the 40 years ago, when our subdivision was developed in West Cobb, we were opposed to the reduction size because from a 20,000 square feet, R20 is what we are all developed as. He's requesting it down to an R15, which is just over 16,000. Also, in 1981, when the original development of West Point was established, Terry Kastner, who is, excuse me, Charles Kastner, who is Terry Kastner's father, had promised the West Point subdivision that that would be considered a green space, and it would be left as a buffer. If there were any future recommendations made to the adjacent property. So that was back in 1981, and now, in recent development, we have summer hour, summer hour subdivision surrounding us, so with only a 15-foot barrier. And the property here, it's not that one, it's that one, okay. Subdivision, everybody in my subdivisions, being that it's an older subdivision, is on a septic tank. We're already having storm water issues here, which is on that piece of property. You can see that it's very flooded, and the storm drain is almost full to the top. What they're proposing is that summer hour subdivision would take this property on as part of their green space. And when I spoke with them on this weekend, none of the residents there knew or understood anything about this property. So the residents of the West Point subdivision understood a second time, two years ago, when they started with the summer hour subdivision, that that would be green space allotted to summer hour. And now, it's just like a sinkhole for drainage water. It already goes up and floods over into the man next door's property as it is. The summer hour subdivision did not understand anything about this, they had no idea that they were going to be hit with this, and they just established their HOA this past week. So they have been at a disadvantage. We believe also that this would put our storm water issues immediate to our neighborhood, because it's not, it's already stressed.
Can you help me and Lena look, thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's much better.
We believe it's already going to stress our... We believe it's already going to stress our subdivision storm water drainage. The lot size is not appropriate for our county codes, Cobb County codes, or the state codes to put a septic tank on. It's also part of the Piedmont Granite Ridge on that property. It would have to be blasted a lot to be able to get anything in there. This is right at the very edge of the property, so that the driveway would have to be adjacent to that or most of the on it. We're requesting that you deny this application with respect to the non-conforming of the lot size, the lack of sewage, and they don't have septic tank drainage issues, or, excuse me, don't have a septic tank and the lack of sewage in our neighborhood. And the topography of the lot, as it appears, is a dumping ground, a runoff for the 40-acre, 40-plus acres on West Point Drive itself. We respectfully ask you, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, to deny the application of OB-8. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this other business item? Okay, not seeing any. John, may you please give a staff's recommendation?
Madam Chair, there are some things that I'm unclear about, that the applicant stated in his presentation. So the staff had asked the board to continue to consider holding the case for 30 days.
Okay. Commissioner Gamper?
And I agree with that, and I know Tim's not here, because now my question is, John, I know we've gone back and looked at the Platts for summer hour, which is the neighborhood that is adjacent to this. And this property was never included in that plat, so we got that, that question answered. But now, I think we need to pull up West Point's plat and see where their drainage is, if this is meant to be functioning as a part of their detention pond. So I think we need 30 days to do that. But then I would also ask the applicant, given the fact that the Health Department has a minimum requirement of 20,000 square feet, but they also have language that says it has to be within, approved within five years of it being platted, and this is 40 years old. So I'm not sure if the Health Department would still give this a grandfather status or not. But then also, I would like the applicant to see if he could possibly access sewer on the site, given it is less than the minimum requirements for septic.
Okay, so with that, would you like to?
So I haven't made a motion yet, but I didn't know if you wanted to add anything, Commissioner Richardson, or?
Nope, I think you made three, three requirements for the hold, so.
Okay. So with that, I would like to make a motion that we hold OB-8 of 2024 until the April Board of Commissioners zoning date, which is the 16th of April. And do I need to repeat my requirements? With, with the applicant reaching out to the Department of Health to see if a permit could be obtained for septic, for staff to review the West Point subdivision plat in regards to drainage and the culvert that we have seen in the, in the photo, and then lastly, for the applicant to see if an easement could be obtained for sewer. Second.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Okay, we are now going to hear other business item 66.
Yes. Next item is other business item number 66 of 2023, which is to consider amending stipulations for Chick-fil-A Inc. regarding rezoning applications, Z8 of 2022. The property is located on the southeast, at the southeast intersection of Veterans Memorial Highway and Hickory Trail and landlot 165 of the 18th District. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 66? The director says no one opposed, would the applicant please come forward, be sworn in? Can I get a show of people here who are in support of other business item number 66? We got two in support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. Apologies for our tardiness returning from lunch. We hustled back and appreciate you not cutting us from the agenda. I have hard copies of our presentation today. If I could pass those around to the commissioners? And is it okay if I put it on this as well? How should I do that? Okay, well, then I might need one to pass back to me. I have seven total, so there should be plenty. Okay, and my name is Jenna Lee. I'm with the law firm Troutman Pepper, and I'm here this afternoon on behalf of Chick-fil-A. And with us, we have our engineers, Randall Stallings and Stevie Berryman with the Forsite Group, and they'll, they'll be here after our presentation or during even, if you have any questions. Super, so if you guys want to follow along, and it looks like this will be able to show up on our screen. So this, this item is a proposal for a Chick-fil-A at the intersection of Veterans Memorial Highway and Hickory Trail with a Mapleton address. And the, the property is currently zoned neighborhood, retail, commercial. It's approximately three and a half acres. And Chick-fil-A is proposing to develop a 5,800-square-foot restaurant with indoor and outdoor seating, 75 parking spaces, a double drive-through, an enhanced landscaping and pedestrian access from Veterans Memorial, and, and some transportation improvements on Veterans Memorial and Hickory Trail, which I'll show you and we can discuss, go over in a little more depth. The next page, not slide, is the concept plan, the overall site plan. And I, I also have full copies, this might be the simplest thing to do. I was going to say I could zoom in, but I can't zoom in since I only have paper here. So this shows the overall site plan. There were topography issues and challenges on the site that, that, that limited where and how the site could be configured. So this layout is showing primary access from Hickory Trail. And we've been working closely with Commissioner Sheffield and Cobb's DOT and GDOT to, to ensure that the site will work as efficiently as possible. And we've also met with the, the Mapleton Improvement Coalition team as well to go over this proposal. And a few of the, the details on the site have been revised and amended based on feedback that we received from the MIC and, and from, from Cobb County staff. Most importantly is probably the transportation improvements and specifics that we have proposed for Hickory Trail. Let's see. The next slide, and I'll come back to that, apologies. The next slide is the landscape plan. And I won't go into any detail there, but of course, if you have any questions on specifics, we're happy to, to answer. Our specific request before the county is an amendment to prior zoning stipulations that remain from the 2022 other business action that prohibited drive-throughs on this property. So our first request is to amend the zoning stipulations to allow for a drive-through. And the second is a variance to reduce the front yard building setback from 50 feet to 30 feet. And this is in order to allow the order canopy to be placed a little bit closer to Veterans Memorial Highway. And if you scroll back to the, to the concept plan, you'll see that it's not the primary building, it's not the restaurant that's going to be encroaching in the setback, it's the order canopy. So it's the, the roof that you drive under when you're placing your order, which keeps the Chick-fil-A staff out of the weather and rain. And then the next slide is a rendering showing the view of the Chick-fil-A. If you are approaching from Veterans Memorial from the north, so this is the view looking at the Chick-fil-A from that direction. And then the second and final page, final rendering, is the view from Veterans Memorial if you're looking from the south at the, the restaurant. So we, we're really proud of these renderings, I think they look great, and are excited to, to discuss in more detail any questions that you may have. If I could ask you to quickly go back to the concept plan, I did want to mention that, you know, we, we've been coordinating with Commissioner Sheffield and Cobb's Department of Transportation and GDOT pretty extensively on how to address traffic concerns for folks coming out of the neighborhood that's to the west of the proposed location that would be trying to get on Veterans Memorial from Hickory Trail. And so the concept plan you see here, if you look at the, that intersection detail, you'll see that what we've proposed and what GDOT has approved is a designated right-hand turn lane and a designated left turn lane. There's also, this slide cuts it off, but if you look at the full-size plan, you can see it in, you can fully see it. There's a right turn lane off of, off of Veterans Memorial, and there is a left turn lane into the Chick-fil-A restaurant off of Hickory. So that's, that's a lot to spit out, but if you, if you look at the plan, I hope it's obvious that the intent there is to reduce congestion and allow folks that are coming and out of the Chick-fil-A, the, you know, maximum movement to, to get out of there efficiently. And I'll also note with the double drive-through that's proposed for the, for the property itself, for the Chick-fil-A property, that's designed to be ample room for Chick-fil-A customers to queue on the Chick-fil-A property and to reduce, you know, any likelihood that folks would be, you know, spilling out onto Hickory Trail trying to get in line at Chick-fil-A. So with that, I'll, I'll pause and open it up to any questions you have.
Thank you. We're going to conclude our hearing by first seeing if there's anyone else in support. Then we'll have opposition and hear from staff, and if there are any, there are questions that District Commissioner will call.
Super, thank you.
Thank you. There's a balance of two minutes and about 45 seconds on the clock, if anyone else would like to speak in support of this application. Okay, not seeing any. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Okay, not seeing anyone in opposition. John, please, let me know if you can tell me and the board, Commissioners, what staff's recommendation is.
The staff would recommend the board approve the request subject to the site plan contained in the other business packet, with the District Commissioner approving the final site plan, subject to fire comments, Cobb DOT comments, with Cobb DOT approving the final transportation improvements, and all previous conditions not in conflict to remain in effect.
Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you. We received this application, I think it was late October, November of last year. And at that time, I heard from a constituent who expressed concerns regarding the traffic that Chick-fil-A would generate, primarily a resident that lived at the Black Hawk Trail, which is to the west of this development. And that, that's part of the reason I wanted to have the case heard, so the individual can go back and kind of get filled in on where we landed and how we, we got here. But I would like the applicant to approach, and it may be the engineer, Randall, if you would mind.
Yes, Randall Stallings from Forsite Group.
Hey, Randall, it's good to see you in person.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you guys so much. You've really made yourself available in dealing with Cobb DOT and GDOT to come up with a, a, a traffic plan that would work. So we really appreciate your efforts there. As you are aware, I believe you also communicated with the homeowner that was in opposition regarding the traffic, and there is concern because obviously Chick-fil-A has a pretty large following. And this is a pretty sprawling site. I believe this one is a little over three acres. But if you can share with us, how many vehicles does the site accommodate for stacking?
Do you, hold on a second. Do you have that number, Stevie?
Okay.
I don't have that number in front of me. Usually, we have a, a measurement here on the, you know, basically, it's divided by 20 for the all the way around, but I don't have that exhibit with me, so I'm not sure.
Okay, but just based on your expertise and just kind of picturing the vehicles here, about roughly, how many would you have stacked there? Okay, let me ask it a different.
Yeah, I'd hate to, I'd hate to give you a number and then we, we exceed that, but I mean, let's, if I could just explain a little bit, you know, the, the, the idea is to push the traffic as far as they can into the site and then around. So even if stacking comes out of the drive-through, which is the lighter hatch there, it will stack down in front of the dumpster and then back towards the entrance. So, you know, it's, it's almost a complete circle of the site. And we went through many, many renditions of this plan, but part of that was moving the building from, I believe, the, the north side there, right along Veterans, moving it to the west to have as much stacking as possible. And also, the grading challenges, and you were talking about the three-point, some odd acres that we are here. Once you really get past our development, it's, it really falls off and is really not developable, to be honest with you.
Right.
So it is a large piece of land, but we're really developing, you know, two-thirds of it.
Okay, and we've had several, or at least a couple of meetings with GDOT, and there's been an open line of communication with respect to updating your initial, I guess, traffic recommendations. But I just want to focus on Hickory Trail just a little bit. Right now, Hickory Trail is just a one-lane road, and any motorist on that road would have to wait behind other vehicles that are turning left. But with this improvement, with this improvement, the, not just the Chick-fil-A patrons, but also the residents of that area will have the flexibility of turning left and right. And maybe this is for Ligia, I'm sorry, I, I don't have any more questions for, for Randall, oh, these are directed to Ligia. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ligia Florim, DOT.
Hey, Ligia, how are you?
Great.
Good. So you and I have talked quite a bit about this site and the traffic concerns and some of the remedies for those concerns. Originally, GDOT kind of pushed back a little bit on the left turn lane, but after further discussion and review and analysis, they ultimately agreed that a left turn lane would be appropriate here with some other safety measures. Can you just walk us through what we ended up on with this for traffic?
Absolutely. So what they're proposing is to, like, like we said, and we agreed with the assessment from the consultant, to have to propose two lanes coming out of Hickory Trail, because that would allow the right turn movements to make their movement without having to wait for the left turners, which are the ones that are experiencing, in the existing conditions, are already experiencing a high delay, which means it's more than 60 seconds is considered a high delay. They're already at an F after 60 seconds, it's considered an F of level of service. And it's because somebody, just one person turning left onto Veterans Memorial is blocking everybody that's trying to get out of there. So with the extra lane that they're adding, that will ameliorate, at least benefit the people that are going to the right, but yet the left are still going to be experiencing high delays as they are now. They're going to, it's going to compound later on for those left turners. However, for those left turners, what happens in our experience is that when people experience more than five minutes of delay, we just find other routes or avoid that intersection or that movement at that hour, at that peak hour, which is when the delay will happen. So- So, and that is only for the movement on to the left. However, I think what your question was, was the right turners will have now a better level of service. The level of service increases to a C instead of an F because now they don't have to wait as long.
Okay. And also, at the very top of the screen, that diagonal triangle, that represents the island that GDOT approved at the crossbar. Can you confirm if that's going to be a raised island?
It should be a raised island. GDOT will require it to be a raised island, and there's a minimum square footage that they allow for the raised island, a minimum. So the consultant will work through that during their land disturbance permit review process.
Okay, okay, right. Thank you. And the light that we anticipate on Buckner Road, that should also help.
Correct. And the consultant submitted a revised traffic impact study yesterday, and they have already accounted for that signal being there. In the first submittal, they had not accounted for the signal, but now they have, and it doesn't affect the Hickory Trail intersection, but it does help the other intersections as the traffic moves.
Okay. And are there any other road improvements on Hickory Road that the community can anticipate?
Well, they're putting in their left turn into their driveway and their right turn out of Hickory Trail, and I think that's it for this proposed development. And if they have to widen, they might have to repave some section of the road. That will be determined during plan review.
Okay.
You had asked Commissioner about the stacking. I just measuring in GIS, it looks like their driveway, from the driveway around the block, it will be over 1,000 feet in length, which will have 25, you need 25 feet per car. So that is 30 cars that you can stack or more.
On the property, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Just wondering if, I know right now the volume is probably not high enough, but for the left turn onto Veterans Memorial, is there contemplation of maybe revisiting if a light is needed at some point?
For what? Did you say the signal?
Yes, signal.
So GDOT will not approve it? It's too close to the Buckner Road signal?
That's what I was going to ask. If it's too close to, okay.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Do you guys have any other questions for anybody? No? Okay. He said they didn't need it. He said they didn't need it, but you want to ask him?
Don't leave the max. Drop this on the max when appropriate.
Yeah, the proposed development is under the 70% impurgus, per the zoning code.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on social media posts, you usually have a warning when it's a long post. I'm going to just go ahead and add that with my comments. I just have a few things to say about this application, but I'd like to first start out by thanking everyone for joining us today and for the time you invested in the zoning process, and also a special thanks to our DOT staff for working and collaboration with all of the parties to review and expedite this matter for us to hear today because it's been one that we've continued for several months now, just waiting to hear back from GDOT. But about a year ago, I received a call from the seller's broker regarding their proposed development and the challenges posed by the drive-through stipulation. But since then, there's been extensive collaboration with the applicant, GDOT, and Cobb DOT to devise a traffic plan that would have the least impact on the community, and that plan was presented today. However, as with any development, there will be traffic impacts and inconveniences to our daily routines. However, we are a resilient community, and we will adjust over time to new traffic patterns and the inconveniences they might cause. I am encouraged by the applicant's traffic flow plan and the number of vehicles that the property can accommodate in its queue. Veterans Memorial Highway is one of the main arterial roads in District Four and is a critical corridor for the economic viability of the community. And for decades, VMH, or Veterans Memorial Highway, has been and continues to be saturated with tire shops and other car-related businesses such as used car lots and body shops. This subject parcel that's before us today actually had two applications since I've assumed office for a car-related business, in which both were denied. However, as Commissioner for the district, my goal is to empower progress for the corridor's redevelopment and to shift it towards a landscape of retail and commercial establishments that will resonate with the community. The current applicant, Chick-fil-A, holds the potential to ignite the much-needed redevelopment of the Veterans Memorial Corridor. This iconic brand can serve as a catalyst for future commercial growth, making a significant step forward in our long-awaited efforts to revitalize the corridor and enhance the economic landscape of our community. And with that, Madam Chair, that concludes my comments, and I am prepared to make a motion. Oh, I thought there was something at the other end. I make a motion to approve OB-66 2023 with the following stipulations. Establishment of a landscape review committee and an architectural review committee, each made up of the representative of the applicant, the appropriate county staff, and the Mapleton Improvement Coalition, with the district commissioner to have final approval of the architecture and landscape plan. Construction hours are to be Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and on Sunday from 12:00 to 6:00. The applicant will absorb all costs for the road improvements. Any roads that are damaged during construction are to be repaired within 90 days at the conclusion of construction. And all other staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. And that concludes my motion.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion?
Just one comment. The one comment was, I think your remarks were timely.
They were timely, okay, I wasn't sure.
Especially after lunch.
Before lunch, it would have been a different story.
A little bit.
Yeah, I was going to add something.
Any other additional comment? I know the community will be thrilled to have Chick-fil-A. This has been a venture for a very long time, and I'm just happy to have another one of your restaurants in our county. Thank you. With that, call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. We have one more, yes, ma'am, one more case. We will now hear for those who are associated with other business item six.
Okay. Next case is other business item number six of 2024, which is to consider a reduction of required lot size from 20,000 square feet to 19,987 square feet, and to consider a setback variances for an accessory structure for Teohoo. The property is located at the corner of Hembry Road and Hembry Court in Land Lot 464, the 16th District. Is the applicant present? Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number six? Madam Chair and Board, there's no one opposed, and the applicant is not present.
What would you like to do, Commissioner?
We always grant one courtesy, although I do have a gut feeling they were here earlier.
Oh, dear.
But one courtesy missed, and we'll give them day in zoning court next month.
Sorry to hear about.
Yeah, so making sure that that's, okay, I'll continue it.
Okay, would you like to move or make a motion to do so?
I'll make so, I'll do that. Motion to continue OB-6 to the next zoning hearing on April 16. Thank you.
Second. Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, staff and commissioners. We are now adjourned.